Thank you. I've started out well, haven't I? Good evening. Could I please call to order the town council meeting for Thursday, April 23rd? And could I please have Hayden Faust and Justin Kaludi come up to do the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberity and justice for all.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I'm gonna get my things in order and get my glasses on and we can begin. Okay, announcements. First of all, I would like to make my first announcement for welcoming Jody Valencourt to the town council.
Thank you.
We welcome you and we look forward to working with you. At least I do. And anyone else could say anything?
Absolutely.
And let's see, other announcements. You should see the notes I have written on my notes. It's unbelievable. So I'll be referring to them frequently. Okay, Thursday, May 14th at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room, there will be a regular council meeting. On Thursday, May 28th at 7:00 PM, again, in this room, the Matthew Thornton Room, regular council meeting. And on Thursday, June 11th, in this room, Matthew Thornton Room, a regular council meeting. Okay. I'm sorry. Eileen, I thought I had more, so go right ahead. If I find it, I'll finish after you.
All right. Although this is very fascinating stuff. Dog licenses are due by April 30th. The Merrimack Police Open House is Saturday, May 9th from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. Come and see all the police department has to offer and speak to the officers and watch the K-9, Taser and Bomb Squad demonstrations. There will be many static displays for the public to see. People should also be aware that the Merrimack Youth Baseball Opening Day Parade will be held tomorrow on DW Highway. So it starts at 5:30 and starting at Town Hall Parking Lot on Baboosik Lake Road to DW Highway to Byss Field. So people should be prepared to maybe go some other way. And that's all I have for announcements.
Okay, I did have one other thing. I knew there was another thing. We just wanted to make sure that the public knew. We had a non-public meeting, non-meeting, scheduled for last Thursday, 4/16, with the town attorney and the town clerk to discuss taxes and some properties. Now, we didn't have to post it because it's a non-meeting with an attorney, but what ended up happening is that as we sat and we just sort of talked about them, the attorney never showed up. So we stopped the meeting, we made no decisions, and we just want to make sure we're transparent, letting everyone know that. Apparently, he had a programming schedule computer glitch. But it did not glitch tonight. We did have that meeting and made those decisions before the meeting this evening. So we just want to be transparent and let people know that. Okay? Okay. Kinder Morgan proposed not these direct pipeline project. Okay, we have several things. In your packets, you do have the draft from the New Hampshire Municipal Pipeline Coalition. This is a group of the towns that have met together and they have... You're looking at me weird, Bill.
You all received the...
That was not in my packet.
In email you received it. Sorry.
I printed it up.
So anyway, what I'd like to do, this is a letter that has been forwarded to the governor and the delegation, senators and reps.
No.
No, it's a draft form. And we have to come to a decision on whether we're going to concur with this and have Eileen sign it on our behalf. I know we discussed it at the last meeting and I know at that time I expressed my... To be able to reflect our... You're looking at me. Solidarity, thank you, with the group. But I would be open to a discussion. And Eileen, did you want to say anything about it?
Just that the group would like you to either approve it or not approve it because they feel that if every town starts putting, making little changes to it, that it'll never get to where it needs to be. So they're asking that you either approve it as is or not.
It's the pleasure of the council.
Move to sign the letter.
Seconded.
Would you also add, have the town manager sign on our behalf?
Yes.
Friendly?
Would you accept that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions or discussion about that motion? Yes, go right ahead.
Thanks, Nancy. I... It is the difficulty when so many communities are participating in something like this because there were a few pieces that I chatted with Eileen that I had a little difficulty with. I will be supporting it, however, for that solidarity component. And just for the record, I guess.
Okay. So the motion was made by Tom Mayhem, seconded by Bill Boyd. Any further discussion? Yes, Chair.
Can I just ask that we have this letter, once we do sign it and send it in, put on the town website so people can read the language?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All those who pay beside "aye"?
Aye.
All those oppose? None? 7-0-0. Okay, another topic related to the CAM is the survey agreement. You all, I believe, received a copy and CAM wanted two changes in the agreement. First of all, we have to make sure that everyone knows this has not been signed yet. It has to be signed by both parties. In the meantime, they are not allowed to go on town land. And the police department knows that. I also want to make a point of noting that the chief has also reminded his police officers that anyone who has not signed the survey, also, they are not allowed on that land either. And if for some reason someone is found on that land, please call the police department because they're trespassing. Okay? Want to make that aware now. And there are two suggestions or requests that they want to make. On the second page of the three-page document, you will see in a different color, they want to write in, "Upon proper notification of TGB's planned schedule, should the town not be present, then the TGP shall not be restricted to start its survey activities on any given day." That was in... That we had put in that they had, we had to be present, there had to be an employee present. They didn't want that. I don't think we should agree to that. We're gonna have to be present. How do people feel about this? Yes, Tom?
We're the property owner. Any other property owner would want to be with them?
So we officially do not agree with this. We want our original language in there.
That's a deal breaker for me.
And the plan dispelled wrong.
I saw that, too.
On the third page, you'll notice in the color it says, "When the report, the documentation of the survey is done," we had asked that the report, that we see the report prior to finalization. They will... They do not want to have to commit to that. It has been suggested that we could say, "Prior to submission of the report," so that we would know that's in it and we can make rebuttals to FERC at that time. Is that my understanding correct?
And basically, what they're saying is they're doing an independent report and they want to submit their own report without us having the ability to modify it. But we obviously have the right to rebut it and giving us the ability to do so, to know it right away, gives us a chance to rebut it right away.
So upon submission, we would get a copy. At that point, we could report and rebut. Is that what you're...
If necessary.
If necessary. So I'm not sure if... I'm personally okay with that, but I'm obviously opening it for discussion. Yes, Bill?
I'm okay with it, Madam Chair. I think the opportunity to rebut allows us, you know, our technical team to look at it and be able to pick it apart. I think that we're in a better position doing it that way as opposed to what's presented.
Anyone else? Does everyone agree with being able to, "Prior to submission"? That would be the language. Okay. So we will... Yes, Jody?
It's about process, first of all. And I agree. Everybody knows that I don't think we should be allowing them to survey. I understand why the town council is allowing them. I understand your reasons. You've explained them very clearly. I disagree. I don't think we should be allowing them to survey, but I absolutely don't think we should be letting them on our property without us being there. My question is now, do we formally, is there going to be a written response sent back to them and will we get a copy of that and then we'll wait to hear back from them again? Is that how this will work?
Yes, I will contact Patty Quinn and she will forward over our revised draft to their revision. And then they will either sign it or not and then it'll come back here. And if it's, you know, has the same language that you've approved, then I will sign it if you are okay with that.
Thank you, Eileen.
And once that's completed, that would also be posted.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Great. Okay, let's turn to the potential coun... I'm sorry, Bill.
I had some questions on the language of the document.
Go right ahead.
Okay. On page one, just for my own edification, it's the very last paragraph. It says, "The town will permit at any given time no more than four employees and consultants of the TGP, the right but not the obligation." We're talking four altogether or is it four and four?
It's not clear, you're right.
You can modify it to say a total of four employees or consultants. Whatever makes you happy.
Than a total of four? No more than a total of four? Does that add the clarity that I'm seeking?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
A total of, no more than a total of four employees and/or consultants.
And/or consultants, okay. And it should read "from the TGP," not "of TGP."
Okay.
And I might defer to...
Well, they're trying to strike "the," so... They're not "the Tennessee Gas Pipeline," they're Tennessee Gas Pipeline.
Of the Tennessee? God bless you.
Not "the," just "of Tennessee Gas Pipeline."
He doesn't like the...
Well, it... It's just... I'm not trying to parse. I'm just trying to...
Well, it, their employees are consultants of Tennessee Gas Pipeline, so...
Okay, good enough, good enough. On page two, the third paragraph, it reads, "Access shall occur solely between the dates of May 31st, 2015 and November 30th, 2015." Do we need to clarify that we're going to accept holidays and weekends?
No, because our employees probably won't be available on those days.
Okay, good point. I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm good.
Yes, Eileen.
I also took it upon myself to put those dates because I chose May 31st because I felt that it would be drier. And May, June, July, August, September, October, November, six months. Is that right? May, June, July, August, September, October, November. Yeah. Joanna recommended six-month window. So are you okay with those dates?
Sure. The good news is the consultants will want to get their job worked done so they can get paid.
Right.
And the quicker they get it done, the quicker they get paid.
Any other suggestions or questions? Okay, so we're all set on the survey? Okay, action items. Again, as I've done in the previous meeting, I'm only going to read the outstanding items. We are still waiting for evaluation impacts on the sewer line. We've been told that they really can't comment till they know what the plan is because at that point, they'll be able to make a determination what impact it's going to be on the sewer line. And we're still waiting for the community property evaluation effect. Support Conservation Commission's effort to update data for environmental impacts on Hostile Nature Preserve in Gilmore Woods. Tom, you are on the Conservation Committee. Do you have any information?
Yeah, this also is a highlighted item on their agendas and so each meeting, they've been going over what their status is and what their progress is. The consultant has been out on site. He is noting activity out there from all the reptiles and other creatures and critters that are out there. He has, with the Conservation Commission's approval, hired two interns to assist him. This was over and above what was, this is at least one consultant more than, or one intern more than what he originally had asked us for. And they've also gotten some transponders to put on the turtles so they can track their activities. There was a...
What thing?
Well, there was the issue of the bats, but it's not really, we're not quite sure where that came from and not sure at all that there's any habitat out there that would do that. The consultant was made aware of it. He said he took that under consideration, didn't feel there were things out there, but he would keep his eyes open because they require apparently a certain habitat for them to be useful. We think perhaps, like many people who aren't familiar with New Hampshire, they confuse us with Merrimack County where they're more likely to be than they are here. So, you know, but it's one of those things and it's been duly noted and that the consultant's aware of it. And if he notes anything, he'll put it in. If he doesn't, he'll put in that he didn't see anything on it. So, and that's about, I think that's probably pretty much what we had talked about. So they're on track in terms of their schedule and what they hope to do. And they've, as I said, they've got two interns to help them do that. So that's made that apparently helps the consultant be, have a little bit more, be able to manage it a lot better. And we'll get a better product out of it.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. Okay, support Merrimack Village District's effort to protect wellhead protection zone and aquifer protection zone. There is no new information, but that is ongoing. Request CAM list of abuddies notified of project and request for permission survey. And that really has a lot to do with a previous question from the last meeting about getting the appropriate number of lots. Eileen, you were going to comment?
I had a chance to talk to Patty Quinn, who's the person that is the property, the person that goes out and acquires survey permission. And she said that she may be able to give me the list by map and lot number, but she needed to speak to her supervisor, so I haven't heard back from her on that.
I would like to request the individuals, they, if you know who should be included, it might be helpful to us. Okay? So if there's someone who has the proposed homes that they believe should be on it, if that list could be given to Eileen, we might be able to work backwards and then have the numbers corrected. Yes, Tom?
I don't know why they would need to be able to check with their superiors because it was in their documents that they submitted in April or March. It was in there that said that they could not release the names, but they could release the parcel numbers.
Okay, all right. She just hasn't gotten back to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Work with property owners to develop a list. Okay, no, that's the same as the number. We have to get that information before we can do it. Okay, maintain contacts at FERC and New Hampshire Congressional Delegation. And just to let people know, we have recently heard, in fact, it was in the newspaper, too, but we had also heard that there's going to be a coalition meeting, not coalition meeting, but there's going to be a meeting at Amherst on April 28th at 1:00 PM. And depending upon who you talk, 2:00 PM. Depending on who you talk to, are they going to talk about a proposed alternate route or not? But just to let you know, the town council, I'm going, Bill's going, I'm not sure others, Tom will go, and Eileen's going. So the public may go, but you are not allowed to talk or have any input. I'm sorry, Tom?
Bill's district will also have represented there.
Ah, nice. So that is something. And Eileen, do you want to talk about the, any other information at all?
Yes. As you indicated, the newspapers said that the meeting was on the 29th, which it is not. It's on the 28th at 2:00 PM at Amherst Town Hall. And also, the selectmen were quoted as saying that they had alternate routes. And I spoke to the manager and he said they do not. So not really sure how that all is going, but... So the other thing that I wanted to tell you was that I, on one of these items here under speaking with a representative from Eversource, I had a chance to speak to one of the vice presidents of Eversource and he sent out information and questions to all his counterparts throughout the company to ask if there had been any relationship or any contact made with, from Kinder Morgan to Eversource regarding this project. And he called me this morning and he said, "As of this morning, no contact whatsoever has been made to Eversource regarding this project from Kinder Morgan."
Which is hard to believe, but... So we will keep that, just keep an eye open on that. Okay, the Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation, there's been no application, so we just have to wait on that. Couple of things from the last meeting. I talked about the homes. They were, there was a question about how many emails had been received related to that address, and there were two emails and they have been posted on the website. And that was in February. Is that correct? Request for a solo-scoping meeting. Apparently, that has already been done. It's also been, we've been clearly told they will be regional. There will be no solo meetings. So we tried, but we've been pretty, told pretty straightforward. And the last was an update on the NRPC meeting. Tim, would you take it just one minute? Tim is our representative for NRPC related to this. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the council. The National Regional Planning Commission has an Energy Facilities Advisory Committee that was established in late February with representation from each of the communities along the route as well as the other communities within the National Regional Planning Commission region. We've been working initially every Friday of, every other Friday, having meetings at NRPC with the representatives. We're expected to report back to the NRPC commissioners later this year in terms of the statutory requirement regarding regional planning, having input to the Site Evaluation Committee at the state level, which I think is something that's a little bit premature given where the process is at this point. But that's the basic tenet of the committee's work is to answer those questions as they are from the state statute. We are broken up into individual subgroups to look at different aspects of the project. Those are environmental, construction, economic impacts, historic impacts, infrastructure and safety, and demand and need. Each of those is usually a pair of people from the committee working together. We're continuing to gather information in those subgroups and be reporting back to the group at each of our meetings. NRPC is also helping to prepare responses to the AECOM letter for the majority of the communities who have not responded individually. At this stage, ourselves at Milford are the only ones that have responded directly to that letter. So there may be some additional information that NRPC comes up with in their investigation that we can use to supplement the information that we've already sent. So that's really where we've been at this stage. We continue to meet at least every other week for the foreseeable future and we're certainly glad to provide updates to the council as we move forward.
I, just quick, how many attend that?
On average, I'd say there's probably about 15 to 16 of us. That includes usually representation from Senator Sheehan's office and Congresswoman Custer's office. They're the two staff members from the federal delegation that have been consistently attending the meetings. That does not include the NRPC staff that's involved as well. It's primarily made up of town administrators, selectmen. There's myself and Sarah Marshawn from the City of Nashua, the two community development directors on the group. And the Hudson Town Engineer is the representative for Hudson. And some of the other communities, Hollis, I believe, has one of their task force members is their representative.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions of Tim while he's here? Bill?
Just a general question. Tim, the NRPC with their work with some of the smaller communities like Litchfield and Mason who may not have the sophistication that the town of Merrimack does, is it your experience so far that the NRPC is really going to be a little bit more vested with those particular communities based on the dynamic of their municipality versus...
From what I've seen so far, they really are treating each community equally and they're primarily focusing on the environmental piece. As far as the subcommittees go, NRPC is handling the environmental impact piece. We've seen some draft information from NRPC about each of the communities along the route and from what I can tell, even Merrimack, where we've already responded, they're including us in that work as well.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else like to question? No? Thank you very much, Tim.
I have a question about the letter on the list.
Yep, absolutely.
The letter of opposition that the town council crafted and sent to the governor, the congressional delegation and our local reps, which is great, thank you. Were we going to send it to FERC? And if we weren't, would there be a reason why we wouldn't?
Having considered it, but I don't see any harm in it.
All the other towns are, so I think we should as well.
If I remember correctly, part of my motion was that FERC be copied on those particular letters that were sent.
We'll just double-check on that and if not, we'll make sure they get them.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is, before we open up for public comment, do any counselor, yes, you want to say something?
One more thing, excuse me. One more thing about the Conservation Commission. They are gathering up their studies and reports and the different things that they've done, many of which are posted on their website, by the way, Merrimack Outdoors. Forestry plans and those sorts of things that have been put together over the last 10 or 15 years. And they will be packaging all that stuff up and forwarding that along to FERC.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll open up for public comment now just to do with the pipeline. This should go fairly quickly. Hey, Justin. Let's all turn and look at Justin. Are they getting this on TV, Justin?
Carol Shapiro. 10 Cambridge Drive. Whoa. Not usually that loud. My question a couple of weeks ago wasn't so much how much activity, but, well, I guess I started out that way, but I don't see a link to that email on the Merrimack website. And I could have missed it, but I thought that was one of the action items.
I understand.
I think you're correct. I think we just put, we just put the comments on there and I think you're right that we should obviously also include people giving the links so that people can... should obviously also include people giving the, the links so that people can continue to comment.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll correct that.
And then the other thing was, yes, I actually remember about that letter being copied to FERC, and I thought we were putting it up on the town website as well, once it was in a final draft.
It should be, it was supposed to be here.
I looked yesterday, I could have changed.
I thought we had to. And you're correct, we were told we had to.
Thank you.
If that, I need to do less. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kristi Bradshaw, 54 Whittier Road. The New Hampshire Municipal Pipeline Coalition letter that you all approved, there's one change that should be made in there, it says 17 affected towns, it's 18. Minor detail, but it's 18 New Hampshire towns. On surveying the land relative to privately owned land, not town-owned land, if we've taken the steps to post our no trespassing signs appropriately, and we've sent in our denial of access to survey, what are the steps we should be taking when we see the, the pickup trucks?
Call the police station.
Are we to go up to the people who are surveying and say anything to them, or do we just call the police?
It's up to you. I would.
They're aware that this could be going on, so they, you know, they've all been updated that, that this might be possible, so just, just give them a call.
I would want them to get caught, personally.
Yeah. Well, we found that a lot of our no trespassing signs were not only, well, we had to stick them in the, I don't know how many feet of snow we had in the winter, because the land wasn't posted. So my husband got very tall wooden stakes that really only went down into the snow, and the signs stuck up over the top of the snow. We knew those would be down once the snow melted, but not only that happened, but the signs have actually all been ripped off the posts and mutilated, so we don't know if it's just what that's all about. The sewer line that you talked about, that they can't comment until they know the actual, what the plan is?
Because they don't know what, where it's crossing, what impact it would have. That's what they're telling us.
But, it's kind of like we have to be able to say, we have to be able to give factual data why, why this isn't good, where it's supposedly going, so it seems...
I think the closer we get to, I'm sure they're doing some rudimentary thinking on it, but they really can't do an official, my opinion is, they probably can't do an official comment until they know where it's going to intersect and what impact it's going to have. Tom?
It's because of the way the cycle works with Kinder Morgan not submitting their stuff until September, when they will give a more definitive route at that time, they may be waiting for that, to show if that's going to move within that, within the, within the right-of-way that they've identified on their preliminary reports.
But that puts us out of the scoping meeting phase and out of the pre-filing stage. So it, it just, from things that I've heard, it, it seems like this is the time to have some effect on the route, and if we're able to not offer information until after that timeframe?
You can point that out at the scoping meeting, that despite your best efforts, you were unable to be able to tell you the impact on the sewer line, because we couldn't get a definitive response from Kinder Morgan as to, as to the act, as the actually where it would cross the sewer lines.
It seems kind of convenient for Kinder Morgan.
Go ahead, Eileen.
It's, it's been the Public Works Director and the Sewer Superintendent, I believe his name, his title is, who have been speaking to the contractor. And I believe that the contractor is probably a purist and wants to give answers that are very technical, you know, how deep is it in this section and that kind of thing. But I'm going to, I'll go back to them and talk to them about giving more of a generalized response to it going over the section that we're talking about and going down three feet, which is what they're talking about.
Okay.
So we'll do that.
And even if it does change, at least we'll have... Yes, Judy?
Thank you, I just, everyone is working off the currently proposed path, everyone is. So everyone has to explain what they anticipate the effects would be. So I don't understand why that department would be any different, and I think that's a really good point, Kristi, thank you.
Yes, Dan?
And for clarification for everyone too, they're working on the word corridor, which is huge. But until there's, and my understanding is, until their survey work is done, that's, that's when they'll tell you exactly where it's going. And I mean exactly. So right now, it's very broad, it's a very broad concept. But until their survey work is done for many miles, dozens of miles, 80 miles, you won't, we, none of us will know where it's exactly will be.
It's not going to be here at all.
Power, power of positive thinking.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I know I'm taking up a lot of time. The affected homeowners, I'm going to be a stickler about this one. It's not something we should be waiting for Kinder Morgan to tell us about. We know what the proposed route is. We are able, Dan, I think you might have said it at the last meeting, that it's a fairly easy thing to do. You take the, you know, the GIS maps, and you put the proposed route and look at a 200-foot corridor on either side, those are your affected properties. Kinder Morgan's definition, I'm happy to send it to you, what Jim Hartman said their definition of affected landowners are, we need to come up with that number. And I thought that was something that, at the very beginning, we were identifying those homes on our own. I think there's going to be a very big difference in the numbers that KM is reporting.
Just out of curiosity, I'm, I'm not going to commit you to it, but what numbers are you thinking? I mean, what's...
Well, when I sat down at my own computer and pulled up the NRPC GIS maps, and I didn't have the ability to put a 200-foot corridor
Correct.
overlay to see exactly. So, I was going on any property that abutted
Right.
an intersected piece of land,
Yeah.
which is more than 200 feet for some people, if they're horse-hill, you know, abutting properties. It's more than 200 feet, but I still think they're affected. However, so my number came up probably a little higher than what KM's definition would come up with. But I was up to about 135.
Not significantly different from what you have.
But they're saying 61. It's absolutely, I say it again, it's 61. They counted Whittier as one, we're 64. So add 63 more to that, and it's that many more landowners.
And they do know that.
And I do think that's a very important piece of information to show that they are not being forthcoming with the actual effect this is having on New Hampshire homeowner, landowners.
Just by the numbers. Eileen?
We have come up with that list, but we're at a stumbling block also, because we don't know, because those common pieces of land, although Patty told me that she was able to figure out the, the other neighborhood, the Scott Avenue, and there's another street that has a combined piece of property, the homeowners that own it. But she's run into a stumbling block, because the parcel that is in your neighborhood that is commonly owned is under some attorney's name, is what she told me. So our list doesn't have all of your homes either, because they don't touch that 200 feet.
But your list should have our homes, because we are landowners, and we're talking about affected landowners.
They're saying 200 feet from, 200 feet that are touched, that, that the corridor
But it doesn't matter where my home is, if I'm an owner of a piece of land that's affected, I am an affected landowner.
What they're saying is that if you're not within the 200-foot corridor, you're not in a butter, for their purpose...
I'm not in a butter, I'm an owner.
The common land is a butter.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to, I, I feel very strongly about this, and I'm not, I'm not taking it out on you, Eileen. But it's, we got, we've got to get some of the basics straight here.
The common land abuts it. And the common land is owned by all of the residents.
Right, 1/64 interest.
That's the 64.
We all own it, and we still haven't been notified.
I have asked Patty to go and do that, and she's come up into, she's come to a stumbling block, because no one will tell her who belongs to that association.
There isn't an association, we're all individual homeowners.
But how does she know who are the individual homeowners who are part of this?
There are 64 homes in the neighborhood. Every home owns 1/64 interest in that piece of common land.
That's good to know.
So you need to be able to find some sort of documentation that reflects that.
I need to find it?
No.
I have it in mind, I'm happy to provide you with what I have.
So that you have documentation.
I'm happy to do that. I just, I didn't know that there was a, I, I was waiting for a list from somebody.
From Kinder Morgan?
No, from your neigh, I thought, I, it was my understanding that you, your neighborhood was going to start thinking about putting together their, their group again, and then...
We've been advised not to.
Okay, I'm, I, I wasn't really asking that, but I'm just, I, I'd be happy to add all of your homes to the list, now that I know that you all own a 6/4 of that parcel, but I did not know that before.
And even if you, thank you, if you take our neighborhood out of that equation, just take us out, it's still more than 61. It's a lot more than 61. Thank you.
You're probably talking 10 more, you were saying.
We have...
If you're saying 135, comes out to 125 if you include all of your, the Whittier Place residents. So that leaves 10 more properties.
At least.
So, what we have done is we've asked the assessing department to do it, and we've asked the, the GIS professional to do it from a, from a, you know, width perspective. So they're coming up with the same list.
So when can we get that list? We don't need to know names, we just want to know numbers.
You can actually come in and pick it up tomorrow, if you want.
Excellent.
But I do need to, just so you know, I don't have all your neighborhood on there, and that I, I would need to add that.
Okay.
Okay.
And it's just, it's the number I'm looking for, I'm not looking for you to identify the properties, just...
Just the number.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Dan, did you want to say something? No. Yes, get ready. I'm sorry, Bill, did you want to say something first?
Just to, just to kind of validate what, what Kristi was saying, absent a condo association, generally when a developer creates a, you know, you know, subdivides a piece of property, if there's a common area, usually there's a declaration of covenants. Covenants run within the deed and gets carried on whenever the property is transferred, and it's written right on the, right on the face of the deed.
That's the documentation I was talking about.
Yeah, so it would, it would be a, it would be a declaration of covenants that would have been recorded by the developer at the time that they, prior to, if not the property not being subdivided, it would have been included as a part of the subdivision plan when they submitted to the Registry of Deeds down in Nashua.
And if that's true, I think that would be the kind of documentation that, at least a sample of it, to give to Eileen, so she has that. So when she talks about including that, she has that as backup of why she's done it. That's what I was thinking of. Gina, go ahead.
Hi, Gina Rosati, 15 Dunbarnton. I'm not sure how many of you are on Facebook, but if you are, you may want to look into this Merrimack Citizens for Pipeline information. One of the things that I just posted on there, and I'm not sure if you guys all know, is FERC has a new chairman who replaced Cheryl LaFleur. Are you all aware of that? Okay, his name is, and I'm going to mix this up, it's either Norman Day or Bay, and... Judy might know that? Day, okay. He was appointed by, pardon me? Norman Day. He was appointed by President Obama. He does not like protesters. He will turn off his microphone, he will shut them down. So I am assuming that he has been appointed because he likes to play hardball, so, just to warn you on that. The other thing is, the other thing, yeah, I wasn't happy to read that article. I did read the Amherst, and thank you all for going to the meeting, those of you who are going, I did read the Amherst reroute possibility, and one of the things that was suggested was that they would come down 101A and come a straight shot down Continental. So, keeping in mind that we've got the community hospice house, we've got several neighborhoods, we've got the Ferry School, we've got a water protection area, I just want to make sure, pardon me? Church, I just want to make sure that the town council will still stand in unity, that they will still oppose any change in that pipeline.
Yeah, I personally, I'm not sure I can speak for the council, I think I can. It's not the route that's, we are opposing, we're opposing the pipeline.
Thank you.
The only thing that would change is that our environmental issues would shift to that environmental site. But the bottom line issue of the pipeline is still, anyone can disagree with me, but they don't dare.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
You are the chairman.
For now.
Why would, why would we challenge you?
If you want to come up and make a...
Are these only Kinder Morgan comments?
Correct. We're going to get into the other public comments in a minute. Any other Kinder Morgan comments? No, okay. Now...
Go back to what Gina was talking about. There, that, that route isn't as trouble-free as they may think it is. There are several wells that supply those strip malls down there, and because they supply water for more than 20 people, they're considered public water supplies. So there's a different set of rules that apply, and the radius around them changes. It's not like an individual well. And if they're running down the railroad right-of-way, they're going to run smack into the wellhead protection area for the two wells that we have over in Hollis. So it's not, you know, they can say they want to go down that route, of course, good luck with Pan Am, but anyway, that, you know, it's not without its problems, you know, as compared to what they, the, the, the route that's currently proposed.
Okay. Now we'll open comments from the press and public, for any other section. Just, your name and your address, please, Hayden. And lift up the microphone, there you go.
Hayden Faust, 5 Lilla Court. I'm a Boy Scout from here in Merrimack, 424, and last fall, the board approved my Eagle project to build a World War II memorial down at Veterans Park to honor Merrimack World War II veterans. Now that the ground is thawed, my project's on track to be completed here in a few weeks, and I wanted to take this opportunity to formally invite the board to the dedication ceremony I'm planning to hold on Memorial Day, after the parade that's being held. I plan to, it's called a small dedication ceremony, to officially dedicate the memorial. And the board is formally invited, and I would appreciate any input the board has on inviting other representatives or state representatives that might be interested in attending, the best way to contact them, and any specific people that would like to go.
Can we provide the list of state reps?
I'll, soon, this coming weekend, be providing the town with a formal invitation with a set date and time and everything, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the invitation.
Looking forward to it, congratulations.
Thank you.
He'll be happy when it's not done, it's not done. It'll be done.
Okay.
You might want to shift it, there you go.
Yeah, I'm a little... Okay, Wendy Thomas, I'm at 10 Wildcat Falls, and I'm up here to talk about the selected wood harvest that happened in our neighborhood, which is Atherton, John, Wildcat Falls, West Tramberland, it's a block of land. And I just want to say, at the recent Conservation Commission, when they discussed this project just recently, they said that sometimes residents think the land is their own private land, and they have to remember it's town property. And then they also dismissed an entire neighborhood's concern by saying, "I think this is just an education thing." I heard a very similar statement from Mike Powers, who is a forester, who, when I pointed out that he left a buffer of dead trees, some that are very tall and will be falling down soon, this is abutting our property, and that he hadn't protected the nests in the land, and that the land had been overcut in the John area, and that the wetlands had been invaded, he threw up his arms and told me that I needed to read some books on forestry management. That was an excellent suggestion. I pulled down the guide to New Hampshire Timber and Harvesting Laws and the Good Forestry and the Granite State Recommended Voluntary Forest Management Practices for New Hampshire, both are, which are located at the UNH Cooperative Extension and Website. Learned lots of things, I'm still learning things. First of all, let's start with communication. If we, it starts with the definition of selective cutting. Everybody in our neighborhood has lived with those woods for years, many of us have lived there for decades. If you stand on our property and look to the left, no one, no one is arguing that that was poorly done. There is actually one tree where they, they bumped... one tree where they bumped some bark off that probably should be fixed, but other than that, that's not the issue. It's when you look to the right, and you look behind John Street, that all of us are gassed. And this all started because a resident approached the town council. He stated that he purchased his home this past August, and quick, and these are from the town council notes, and quickly realized he would not be able to use solar panels because of the tall pine trees located in the back of his property. Welcome to New Hampshire. Trees block the sun up here. Approximately fifteen trees, this is what he asked for, for the town, fifteen trees on his property, he asked the town to cut down. That's pretty interesting. I don't know of anyone in our neighborhood who has not paid to have trees cut down. Had we known that all we had to do was come before the town council, and you would have cut down the trees for us, we would have saved ourselves thousands of dollars. In order to do this, I don't know if it's policy or if it was just politeness, the town gave, sent each of the abutters, oh, Mark's going, a letter telling us that this was going to happen. The letter was dated March 25th. We got our letter on April 10th. That's sixteen days after it was dated. We got, we got our mail at 2:30 in the afternoon. That leaves 2.5 hours until the business office close. I was down in Washington DC. Mark read me the letter. I said, there's nothing I can do about it down here, I'll look into it when I get home. They started cutting Monday morning.
What were the dates again, I'm sorry?
I got the letter over there.
It was dated three twenty-five.
It was dated March 25th.
And when did you receive it?
We received it April 10th, sixteen days after it was dated.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, okay.
Wildlife. Oh, first of all, okay, second thing, this is a new topic, conflict of interest. The forester serves two masters. He's, he's paid by the town, and he also gets a percentage of the wood that's cut. That's, that's a direct conflict of interest. I mean, why would he not take the most, the tallest and the best trees? We have photos of heavy machinery in the wetlands, and when I first met Mike, who Paul had identified to me as a ranger, he's not a ranger, he's a forester, he said there were no violations. He's not qualified to make that statement. And because he stands to gain financially from the tree cut, he should not be the person to make that assessment. That's the responsibility of a New Hampshire forest ranger. Wildlife. Mike told me that it's not my job to take binoculars into a property and find nests, this was a direct quote when I was talking to him, and yet best practices, as indicated by the state of New Hampshire, say that it should be his job. In fact, when I sent him an email alerting him to several large raptor nests, his reply was, I have not seen any tree, nest trees, and if there was a nest tree, I would certainly want to save it. So there, I'm not going to go through the best practices, I'm going to be preparing a report later, but best practices in New Hampshire, if there is a raptor nest, you are supposed to leave an area of one chain, which is an archaic measuring system, it's sixty-six feet, around an active nest. Landing areas are not supposed to be located near or under nests. Both of those were not, not followed. The residents, the residents located two large nests, those were eventually marked and saved. Another nest on the Atherton side survived, and a fourth that we were not able to get anybody's attention to was cut down. On the lands, the wetland and the surface, wetland and surface water are regulated under RSA 482, which was enacted in 1969. I don't know all of that RSA yet, give me some time, I'll, trust me, I'll do it. Best practices recommend that you only cut near wetland area when the ground is frozen or when the ground is dry. The month of April is probably one of the wettest months that we have. You're not supposed to take heavy machinery into the wetland area. You're not supposed to take trees that, that shade the wetland area, and this is because it's a very fragile ecosystem. The other reason that, that we protect that area is that's aquifer land. Many people in this neighborhood have wells. You know, if you, it's the same thing with the Kinder Morgan concern. You know, if you destroy that, that water, that water system, then our wells go dry. Our wells get destroyed. Dead trees. Before, before they got to our end of the lot, I was walking with Mike, and I was pointing out, we have many dead trees that, in the buffer of our yard, in fact, I've counted eleven. Will probably have more once I realize whether they're budding or not. And, and Mike, he asked me if I wanted these dead trees cut down. They were not on our property, they're in the buffer. And I said, I can't make that decision. I'm a resident. This is not my property. If it were up to me, I would leave them up. They, you know, they've got all the holes for the woodpeckers, and they've got the nests and everything. So, I mean, and that's one of the problems. You should be making solid, solid judgments, not based on what the residents want. There's something called a basal zone, which is covered under RSA 227J9. A basal zone is the area, and it's, it's a really weird system, and I'm still learning it, but within 150 feet of a town road, you're supposed to only harvest fifty percent of the board lumber. So if you stand to a tree, and if you're a man, and you stand to the tree at breast height, is the way they define it, and so you, it's a measurement of board lumber. So it's not like you take this tree down, you don't take this tree down, you know. So there's, there's actual equations involved. I'm still looking into this, I'm measuring, I'm going to be counting all the stumps out there this weekend. It's very clear that that was not followed, the basal zone was not followed in the John area. The landing zone, Tom, at the last Conservation Committee meeting, you said that it was 100 by 30. I'm going to be measuring that this weekend, I don't think it's 100 by 30. I don't know where you got that number, but I think it's a lot, lot larger than that. Regrowth. Everyone says, Mike told me, I've heard it from several other people, that in five to 10 years, we won't even notice that this cutting occurred. My question is, in five to 10 years, are you going to go back in there and cut the trees so that solar panel guy can use his solar panels again? I mean, you did it before, so why wouldn't you keep doing it, right? If the town has such obvious disregard for best forestry management practices, how are we going to protect the town's land when an entity like Kinder Morgan comes in for surveying or clear cutting for a pipeline? The damage has been done in our neck of the woods, there's nothing we can do about it, but we can stop this from happening again. But wildlife and public land are an important part of our town, and they're an important part of New Hampshire. We have an obligation to protect what we've been put in charge of, and there, everyone in this neighborhood takes that to heart. We protect this land. In the future, abutters need to be notified in a reasonable amount of time with a clear explanation of the project. They should be provided with maps, definitions, and copies of filings, as should the Conservation Committee. Communication is imperative, both so that we know what is going on, and also so that we can check to make sure rules are being followed. You must never acquiesce to one resident's demands. Again, you've set a dangerous precedent. Again, over the years, Mark and I have paid thousands of dollars cutting down trees that were close to town property. We would have, we would have loved to keep that money in our pocket. The forester should not be serving two masters. He either works for the town, or he gets a percentage, it shouldn't be both. If you're not going to change the system, then a member of the town or the Conservation Commission should be assigned to every future selective cutting, surveying, or clear cutting to make sure the best practices are being followed, and that the town land and wildlife is being protected. There you go. Oh, awesome. Who do I give this to? Because I think this should be an agenda item on a future, a future meeting. This is a agenda request.
Agenda request?
Okay. And hopefully, within two weeks, I will have read through those documents, and I will have a report for you, complete with photographs.
Does anyone want to speak to this topic? I, yes, I have a statement, but I want to make sure it's all.
Madam Chair, I just want to let you know, Mike Powers is in the audience. He works for Bay State Forestry, who is contracted to our conservation land as the town forester, if you have questions for him.
Okay, why don't we take all this testimony first? Are you here for that? Are you, for comments, I'm sorry.
Lori Streeter, I'm onto Wildcat Falls Road. I echo all of the same concerns that Wendy Thomas has just spoken of. I don't need to add a whole lot, except for, again, the, the notice that we got, and I do thank Finley for bringing that up at the last public meeting, asking the question if the abutters had been notified. I appreciate that. But again, I, I think it was very vague. I called the town hall, I asked the town manager's office, and they really couldn't give me much information about it as well, when I asked, what does this selected cutting mean? All I was told was, I'm sure they're being responsible. So now that everything has happened, that ship has sailed, we can't do much about it. Again, I think we're all concerned with just making sure that we're responsible, that you know that we care about the environment out there, and we, you know, if we have to come to the meetings, I mean, I took time off this, and I normally can't get here, but if it's something that important to everybody, I think we want to stand up and take notice, and try to be a little bit more responsible going forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Sally Beatty, seven John Lane. My family's directly impacted by this. I moved from Nashua, where I had absolutely no trees in my yard, to a nice forestry area, I could raise my kids. My house is bacon in the sun now, you know? Now, I'm sure the impact on my electricity bill is going to be up, because now my air conditioner is going to be running longer. You would have been better off to just take the trees the man wanted down, instead of coming in and decimating that forest. That's all I have to say.
Harry Snell, two and a half Edwards Lane. Again, I'm a resident in the neighborhood, and we're all pretty devastated. It's pretty much a sore spot and a sore eye as you're coming down the road. And I guess two concerns I have is, one, the gentleman that requested the trees come down, I hope that he doesn't reap the benefits of a beautiful backyard landscape, now that we have to look at this big hole in the woods. I hope that he doesn't have the opportunity to landscape the public land behind his home. The other thing is, at the end of the day, I understand it's town property, but as the other folks said, we take a lot of pride in that. It's town property, yet we pick up the trash on the road, we deal with the nuisance of the ballpark, you know, and, and nobody really thought about those things, that this is our home, and this is what we look at every day. And again, it's town property, but I don't see anybody from the town coming to pick up all the beer bottles and the trash, and so maybe that's something that somebody could think about, because I'm assuming that's going to be just another tossing ground for trash as they're leaving the ball field, and parking their cars up there, and there's no lights, you know, now the lights are on the ball field, so the activity in the evening has been cut down, which we appreciate. But now you've got a dark spot in the woods where people can park their cars and party, and throw more trash that we'll need to pick up, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Deborah Vaughn, fifteen Christopher Road. I'm not an abutter, so I was not notified. And so I just drove down and saw the after effect of what had happened, and then later saw the short, brief letter that was sent to the abutters that made it seem like a normal tree thinning, that I would have even agreed to. And I live at Wildcat Falls. I have lots of woods and water and stone in my backyard. And I just have to say that I'm very disappointed in this group of people, or whichever group of people, agreed to have this done without the follow-through and knowing what was actually going to happen there. To just say, yes, cut it down, because one person asked for that, is just unimaginable to me, from this group of people. So I just, I need to tell you that I'm very disappointed in your decision, and I hope going forward, when we have bigger decisions in this town, about what you're going to do, that you give more thought to it, and the people that are living there.
Mike Beatty, seven John Lane. I'm worried about the wildlife. I came home the first night after they cut. They left a hole where a woodpecker lived. They left about, they cut up the twenty, left 20 feet of the tree there, and left a nest. Came home the next day, that was gone. So they obviously knew the nest was there. Also, I was talking to the cutters, they're just doing their jobs. They did know about the raptor nests, because they pushed them, they pointed them out to me, so they knew they were there. And I don't like my house bacon in the sun now. I mean, I live right beside John Lane. Now, from, say, noon time to the end of the day, my house is going to be bacon sun. I used to spend my day dodging the sun, because it was only up, I only had sun in my house probably from like noon to about two before. Now I'll be running from the sun all day, because my house is full of sun.
Hello, my name is Mark Nizel, ten Wildcat Falls. To reiterate what Wendy was saying, a lot of the, the trees left in the buffer zone are dead trees. So it's only a matter of time before these things are going to be falling down, we're not going to have any buffer. Additionally, the, the area that was cut dramatically over on John now opens up a large area where wind is just going to be coming towards these dead trees, knocking them down, potentially onto our house, into our property. So I'm, I'm just really concerned about this overcutting in the area by John.
An additional?
One thing I forgot to bring up was.
Just restate your name again.
Oh, my name's Mike Beatty, seven John Lane.
Thank you.
When I got the letter, I walked out in the woods and looked at all the trees that were marked with blue paint. Seemed like a lot, but they took down a lot more than those marked blue trees. Were those the trees they were supposed to take down only, and they took down more? Because all the ones behind five John Lane that are gone were not marked blue. Now it was just one big clear cut behind my house. Mike, were they only supposed to take the blue trees? Is that why they were marked? That's, that's why I'm wanting more were taken down than the blue ones, because I was out there watching them.
Any other comments? Okay. The council will certainly have their, oh, there's someone else. Fortunately, we have all these eyes helping me. Go right ahead.
Tina Shield, seventeen Christopher Road. I am not an abutter either, but I have played in these woods since I was 10 years old. I've noticed that there are cranberry bogs in there, and there are wild species of lady slippers. There was also a mold that was found in New Hampshire, never before in the northern part climate. It was known as a southern plant, and this habitat has been destroyed. You cannot put the lady slippers back, because they need a full filtered sun. They need, the orchids, they're an orchid, and they need full sun coming in at various stages. This habitat where deer and bear and woodpeckers, and I've seen starlets, I think they're called starlets, the ones that you see kind of swirling around in between each other, fly in there, hundreds, at a whack, just to be in this planting area. I am concerned, because the water level, this is a bog, and this habitat will never be the same. I thought that this land was willed at one point to the children of Merrimack. I think he wilted, and Mr. Beatty's grandfather did, so that this land would be protected for the children to play in. If it is still willed to the children of Merrimack, why is this money being given to other people? This money should be going into the school system, it should be maybe to the Boy Scouts that were here earlier. I wish we could keep track of where this money is going, because I don't believe it is the town's, it's the children's. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gina Rosati, fifteen Dunbarnton. So, so what are you going to do with the land now?
Well, right now, we're just listening to comments. That question, someone may choose to answer, but I just want to make sure that all the comments and questions are raised, and now we'll start responding.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Certainly, the other councillors can say what they would like and respond and make any comments, but I just want to start it by saying that I think we owe an apology in terms of not making the letter clear enough. Someone had asked me, in fact, I went out to look, and if I had received that letter, because I don't know anything about logging, I would not have accepted, expected the staging area. I just wouldn't have. And it, and for people who know logging, they would expect that. I wouldn't have. So I think one of the things we've learned is, we have to, in those, whatever we do in the future, we need to add much more specificity to it. Put in the definition of selective cutting, talk about a staging area. They'll be posting, and this is what that means, and what the information is. So I think we've learned about that. Interestingly enough, I would happen to be at a Interestingly enough, I would happen to be at a, an event and got into a conversation with an arborist. I grabbed him and said, "I have questions for you," because I needed a lot of information myself. So I talked to him about the forester and what the, what is the normal, what is the standard practice if you were to do a selective cut, and explained a little bit of it. And he says, "Oh yeah, the foresters, it's standard practice to get foresters, not forest rangers," and I'm just getting information from him. I'm going, "Well, what an arborist." "Well, you could, but it's overkill." Foresters have licenses and they have licenses that they're, that define, one, what their qualifications are, but what they're capable of doing. So I said, "Okay, help me understand about the staging and the selective cutting and," because my initial thing is, a lot of the dead trees will be cut down. He went, "No, no, no, you need to keep dead trees. That is part of the balance of the forest. In fact, you need to get some of those big trees out of the way because they have the, whatever it is, the-" Shade. No. The canopy. The canopy, thank you. And that is, you need to get rid of some of that canopy so sunlight can get in, but there is a balance and that's what foresters are capable of doing. So I said, "Okay, help me understand this payment system." He says, "That's what every town does. Foresters are paid through the logging." I said, "Now, is it done anyway?" He says, "No, not that I know of." So I tried to get information and that's the, I just want to share the information that I got because I had a lot of questions myself as well. So just to be able to clarify, from my perspective, I think probably 70% of the angst is people just didn't know. They didn't have enough information to be able to know, to ask questions, to go look at information and certainly that what was to be expected. So that's just my feedback personally. So any other comments or questions that people would like to, comments? All right, I'm not supposed to be able to, comment section is done.
Okay, but because you're a nice person, you're going to let me do it. All right.
Quickly.
Very quickly. Just because it's been done that way doesn't mean we have to continue. It's clearly an inefficient, inefficient system, it's not balanced, we've got somebody who, who did not follow best practices from, that are from the state of New Hampshire, it's time to make a change.
Okay. My initial response to that, we're not going to get in debate here, so this is going to be the end.
That's why I put agenda.
Is, that's right, is, the intention is being questioned, in my opinion. And I think what I'm saying to you is, all best intentions have always been followed. The Conservation Commission is very protective, I hope you can appreciate and everyone, of their properties and how it's taken care of, and they have always used a forester. So I think what I'm responding to is that we are not going outside standard practice. Now, in the future, that can be discussed, but up until this point, I think it's, there needs to be an understanding, it was not outside the bounds of normal practice. So anyone, Dan?
A few, a few things to say, but the first thing that comes to mind is, I feel bad that so many people in your neighborhood are, are hurt by it. That was not our intention. And when you come up here, whether it's here or the school board, not, you don't get a lot of love, you get very little hate, and then you get a lot of gray in between. Tonight's obviously a lot of hate and that's okay, we have the big shoulders for that. But this gentleman came to us, for me, with a reasonable request. We, we heard it, it wasn't unanimous, and we granted his reasonable request. We then went through the proper procedures and we got what we got. What I'm more curious about, and this is legitimately, I'm concerned and I'd like to find out why, but everybody, if you've been in that neighborhood for decades, you know that it was town land, you know that that has been earmarked for a ball field, we've had extensive reports about ball fields. I take it for granted, you don't want all the trees to be taken down and have a baseball field in the, in your backyards. So there's a disconnect here where you knew it wasn't your land, you knew it was town land, the complex, you already lived next to the ball fields in the complex, and yet that parcel had been earmarked for a ball, a ball field. We at any given time could have had an agenda item and had a request to clear all the land for a ball field. I now probably suggest to all of us that that will probably never happen. But for the future, for all you residents, I would make a suggestion that maybe you all come forward with a plan to, to buy the land from the town. And you say there's 10 property owners, there's a price divided by 10, and then you all extend your deeds and you all extend your property and now the land is yours instead of the town-owned land. It's the only other way I can come to a conclusion that maybe everybody in that, in that neighborhood can be happy, but the fact is, under my, my observation, being here for five years, was that land was technically earmarked for a future baseball field. So when he came, explaining my way of thinking, when that gentleman came to me and proposed the question, I had the ball field information from studying and being here for five years, knowing the future plans for ball fields, so on face value, his request didn't seem unreasonable. That's why I voted yes.
You're going to cut down his trees is not unreasonable?
Again, this isn't a debate.
Excuse me, excuse me. I do have to, I do have to, okay? You had your time, we have to have our time to respond and that's, okay.
So, without any further, that's my response. Again, I, I feel sorry that so many people were surprised, were taken aback, but we'll speak to the forester about more facts, about the word wetland being used a dozen times here, about certain eagles' nests, about people treating foresters and the personnel there was not well, so that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Finley?
I have nothing to add, but there is, there is a place after our meeting. Running the meeting this way is appropriate. There is further comment at the end of the meeting for anybody who wants to speak.
Did you understand that? There's an additional comment time at the end of the meeting if you wish. Anyone else?
Nancy, can I?
Yes, Charity.
I just, I obviously wasn't at the table when this request came forward, when the discussion took place, but I did, when this concern was brought to my attention, I did go back and watch the meetings and read the minutes. I did go out and walk the property. And I understand majority rules. Personally, I, I agree that I think a dangerous precedent is being set. I understand about the ball fields too. I know the Athletic Fields Needs Committee has earmarked that property for ball fields, but at the same time, I think you've got people directly connecting this gentleman's request for his own personal solar panels with the town taking action. And I personally think that's, that is setting a dangerous precedent and I never would have supported it. But again, hindsight's 20/20 and I know that your apology is sincere, Nancy, and I appreciate that. I personally, for any types of projects, I don't think this is something that the town does that frequently, this is something that the Conservation Commission is more involved with. I would have liked to have seen there have been some conversation with the Conservation Commission before this project moved forward. And I also think the notice is definitely an issue. And to, you know, this project was approved back in the fall, but people didn't know about it until like two days before the cut actually started happening, for whatever reason. And I think that definitely is an issue that need, that could have been, should have been rectified differently. I think if the neighbors had had several, you know, a month or two or even longer to ask questions and, and find out more information and we could have possibly educated people once that decision had been made, I think that, not sure that people would have been happy, but it would have, I think, been a lot better than just two days you're having a selective cut and the cutting starts. So that's my two cents. Thanks, Nancy.
Yes, Paul?
Madam Chair, I'd like to clarify a point.
Absolutely.
When we do these cuts, because we have done them in the past, it's not a contract plus a percentage, it's a contract price. This contract was not to exceed $1,500, the town contract. We've done-
Contract with?
Bay State Forestry.
Okay.
It's not $1,500 plus 10 cents for every board fee. We've done these contracts this way. Conservation started this precedent with Bay State Forestry that it's a fixed price for the contract. Whether we go in there and cut a, a tree or we don't, they still get paid their $1,500 for going in there and surveying the land and looking at the trees.
So the number of trees cut down does not influence-
The contract, not at all.
Okay. Yes.
I'd like to hear from the forester.
You would. Would you? And again, remember, certainly feel free. There will not be a return comment. If you want to be able to return comment on what the forester says, you're going to have to wait to the end of the meeting. Just again, your name, please.
Hi, thanks, Madam Chair. I'm Mike Powers. I work for Bay State Forestry Service. I'm a licensed forester in New Hampshire and Massachusetts. I've worked as a licensed forester in New Hampshire for roughly 10 years and I've been working in the forestry industry for about 20 years. There's a number of, of issues that, that I'd kind of like to go over here, especially regarding the talk of violations with the basal area law along the road and the wetlands. I'm, I'm very confident, very confident that there's absolutely, absolutely no basal area violations along Atherton Road or, or John Road. And again, if you contact your state forest ranger, I believe it's Matt Apgar, who works in this district, and contact him, have him come out to the site, have him look at the, what was cut, the number of stumps. You can remove 50% of the total basal area within 150 feet of Atherton and John Road and any other public right of way, basically. I'm very confident that the state forest ranger would find absolutely no violation at all. And the same with the wetlands as well. There's wetlands at the corner of Atherton and John Road. You can cut up to the wetlands, you can't work within the wetland area, you can cut up to them. We were very, we felt we had a very light touch along the wetlands, we did cut some trees, no doubt, but you can cut up to the wetlands, that is not a violation. And again, you can consult with the state forest ranger about that and I'm confident he would, he would find absolutely no violations there. With regards to the wildlife, I, I made a comment to Wendy and I kind of regret. I said that I, my, my job doesn't entail walking through the forested parcels with binoculars looking for hawk nests. I, I don't do that. I work for the Conservation Commission, I, they have folks that go out there and do natural, natural resource inventories, ecologists, and those folks do that type of work. When I work for towns, and I work for many towns in this area, I work for a lot of private folks, but I also work, do a lot of work for towns and the policy, when coming across a nest, is if we find a nest, we will leave that, that nest, the tree intact. The nest that was, was found on site, there was quite a few rumors going around that it was an eagle's nest. It absolutely is not an eagle's nest. There's a conservation officer that visited the site, Sergeant Tom Sitewich, I believe is his last name, it's kind of a difficult last name. Sergeant Todd Sitewich visited the site and looked at these nest trees. The one tree that appeared to have a hawk's nest in it, and he said, "Yeah, it looks like it's, it's a hawk's nest." I have an email from him saying that there was no, it was not an eagle's nest. He, he didn't see any activity with the nest and hawks are, I'm not a wildlife biologist, I'm not an expert on hawks, but some species of hawks will return to their nests, some won't. The species of hawks that do return to their nests, I think red-tailed hawk is one, don't always return to their nest sites. So we're not sure if this is even an active nest. It could be, it could be. I, I would think the hawks would be back to their nests by now, but I, I know when we were setting up the project, we didn't hear any activity. Normally when you get close to a nest, if it's an active nest, you'll, they'll let you know. They won't be happy and I've had that happen many times, they can sometimes be aggressive. So there was no sign or activity of, of, of hawks on site at that time. It could be, it could be still coming back. There was concern with some other nest sites on the property. In talking with Sergeant Sitewich, he said he did a walk of the property and he, there was one tree that I actually flagged, I didn't know if it was a nest or tree or not, I just, there were some branches up in the tree. Again, these trees are probably around 100 feet tall. He looked at that one, he said, "That's a squirrel's nest probably." And he said, the couple other spots that he saw, that he walked around and saw that there could be some potential nest sites, he, he thought they were also squirrel nests. This is coming from, from Sergeant, Sergeant Todd Sitewich. So I think, I think it was probably just the one nest site that was probably the, the biggest concern there. There are no, there are no regulations, state or federal, that offer protection to hawk's nests, it's purely a voluntary thing. If you're a private landowner and you have a tree with a hawk's nest on it, you can, you can cut that tree down. I'm not recommending it, I'm not saying that. But like I say, our policy is, when we find nests for, when we're working on our town clients, we, we will leave the nest. That particular tree, I don't remember seeing it, to be honest with you, I really, it, the, it's, the forest is thinned out now, it's definitely a little bit easier to see. At the time, when I was marking it, I don't think I saw the nest, I don't think I did. The tree's still there, I didn't mark it to cut, but the, I don't, I don't believe I In terms of the, the actual cut itself, I marked every tree to be cut on that property. I marked it in blue paint. I tried to select the trees that I thought were suitable for removal, usually was based on overall health of the tree. So I tried to select trees that I thought were, that had weakening crowns, that were being outcompeted by other trees. And also tried to select trees that maybe showed signs of some sort of disease or rot characteristics, that sort of thing. And then selected some trees that, you know, maybe were mature. White pine tends to, when they get towards 26 inches and 24, 26 inches in DBH, they can tend to develop rot characteristics, which degrades the tree over time and makes it susceptible to, you know, potentially blowing down or snapping off or that sort of thing. So those are the trees I tried to select for removal and tried to leave, you know, the healthiest, best quality trees that I, that I could out there. I, I can't speak to the aesthetic, I know folks are upset by what it looks like, but in terms of silviculture, in terms of forestry, it's, it's basically, in, in my view, a, a well-thinned-out white pine stand. And I, I think you could talk to some third-party folks that, that would probably concur with that. One of them, suggestion would be maybe contacting the Hillsborough County Extension Forester, who's John Newt. Works for UNH Cooperative Extension and he comes out to visit, visit private landowners that have questions regarding trees or forestry operations. So he's a good resource to contact about questions about forestry or logging operations or that sort of thing, so. And I, I think that's about all I have. The, the landing site, I know that that was a pretty contentious issue. I think Paul took some measurements of the site and I, I, I've come up with a, a size of 7,800 square feet, 7,800 square feet. An acre is 43,560 square feet. So it's roughly, you know, two tenths of an acre, maybe a little bit less than two tenths of an acre. The, what we're planning on doing with that landing site is, we're going to do what we call closeout. We're going to bring in a bulldozer to grade off the landing site to remove the debris that's on the site as neatly as we possibly can. We're going to block the landing, we've got some wood, some, you've probably noticed, there's some wood sitting, still sitting on the landing site. We're going to take those logs and block the, block the landing so vehicles can't drive up into it. And then I'm going to seed- And then I'm going to seed lime and fertilize the landing site to try to get it to green up as quickly as possible. And then over time, what you'll probably see is small white pine seedlings really start to over, you know, to grow in on that site and continue, to continue to grow over time. And hopefully it will fill in fairly quickly. But it, it definitely, I mean, I won't, you know, give you any illusions, it's going to take, take some time. And that's the same with the whole lot itself. It's going to take, it looks very raw right now, I understand that. But it will over time, as the young growth starts to, starts to grow, it will fill in and hopefully it will start looking a little better. I think that's about all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Questions for somebody?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, the comments section, if you want to wait to the other comments section perfectly. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Now we're going to go on to the next step on the agenda, which is reorganization of the town council. After, the first meeting after the election, it's required that there is a selection of chair and vice-chair, and I will open up for nominations.
Nancy, I'd like to nominate Nancy Harrington as chairman.
Say it.
Dan Dwyer, motion. Finley Rothaus, would you like to speak to the motion, Dan?
I think you've been doing a nice job, Nancy, and I'd like the continuity to continue. Just appreciate the work that's involved. I, for one, would not want it because of all the extra work that's involved. And now that you are retired, I think it's perfect.
I have no more excuse.
In fact, I'd like to make suggestions for future councils, that maybe people should be retired in order to be chairman, but that's only a joke. But I appreciate the work that it takes because it does take a lot of work and, thank you for it.
Finley?
Yes, I agree with Dan's sentiment and as well, I think during this time of the pipeline discussions, what you bring to the table is very strong and consistent, and I, I would like to see that continue on over the course of this next year.
Thank you. Any other comments or suggestions, recommendations? No. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those against, I'm abstaining, so there'd be six, zero, one. And may I thank you for your trust in me, I will do the best I can. And I probably will be creating bad luck to myself, but let's make it a calm year. All hell will break loose, probably. Okay, how about vice-chair nominations?
Madam Chair, I'd like to enter into the name of Thomas Mahon into nomination for vice-chair.
Finley, second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Dan Dwyer, would you like to speak to the motion, Bill?
Very briefly, to echo Counselor Dwyer's comments about continuity of leadership, I also think it's important to know what Counselor Mahon brings to the table in terms of institutional knowledge. Being a former administrator in Pelham, obviously has really given this council some depth and perspective of issues that have presented, that have been presented to this council. But his role in the Conservation Commission, his current role on the Real Transit Authority, I also think is also illustrative of, of his skillset that he brings. So that being said, I, you know, based on the, based on the foregoing, I enthusiastically support his renomination as vice-chair.
Dan, would you like to speak to?
I just know that Tom had personally finds the position gratifying and he was ready to call it quits. And unfortunately, our, our friend Dave Yakuboff's passing gave him a chance to maybe just re, to take the spot for one more year. And I really appreciate that he did that. And obviously, his, his experience is undoubtedly important to all of us and we appreciate it as well. You guys make a good team for all of us. Thanks.
Any other comments or recommended discussions, discussion?
Actually, I just, I just realized that we did this a little differently than we have in the past. Normally, we just make nominations, there are no seconds required, it's just nominations. But I don't know that anybody else is interested in the position, so I'm not looking to change where we've started.
It's the chairman's meeting.
Okay.
That's why I need him as vice. Okay. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, all those abstain?
I too will abstain.
Okay. Six, zero, one. Abstaining is Tom Mahon.
I thank my colleagues for their confidence in me.
We're a team again.
Why not?
God help us. Got to help us everyone. Okay, next, reorganization, recognitions, resignations, and retirements. Okay, Boston Post cane. Just can read something very short here. On September seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, Madeleine Bennett, the holder of the Boston Post cane since two thousand and eleven, passed away at the age of one hundred. The Boston Post cane tradition started in nineteen oh nine when the Boston Post newspaper delivered the gold-headed ebony canes to seven hundred towns in New England and requested the canes be presented to the oldest citizen in town and passed on to the next oldest when he or she dies. To qualify as a resident, one must be a physical resident of Merrimack and have resided in Merrimack for twenty-five years. After conducting a search and receiving several nominations, Roy Ingerson has been chosen as the next recipient. He was born on May thirtieth, nineteen fourteen, and has been a resident of Merrimack since nineteen seventy. Roy will be presented with a replica of the original Boston Post cane. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Ingerson, not only for his longevity, but obviously his being designated as the new recipient. He's been unable to come to the meeting tonight, but we are going to make a trip to his house to make a presentation. So I congratulate him and we'll be seeing you soon. Okay, appointments, none. Public hearing. This is the second reading of the zoning changes, Tim. The town council will conduct a public hearing to consider the planning board's recommended amendments to the zoning ordinance. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the council. As you may or may not recall, since it was a long night for all of you, the night you had the large Kinder Morgan meeting, I was in front of the council that night to present this as the first reading. The, the set of amendments is covering many sections of the ordinance. The genesis of this started when my department was asked to examine the junkyard section to update a couple of sections for relevance to updated state statutes. In doing so, we noticed that there were several instances within that section that still referred to the Board of Selectmen, which no longer exist in our current form of government. Having done that in that section, we decided we might as well go through the whole ordinance and find all the instances of Board of Selectmen and change them to town council. We presented that to the planning board at a joint meeting with the zoning board in early December. They made some recommendations to other sections to try to clean up references to the ordinance that were outdated, update other sections to updated state laws. So what you have before you tonight is really a series of housekeeping amendments to clarify and bring up-to-date the references to ordinances, regulations, state statutes, and our current form of government. There have been a couple of minor substantive changes to the junkyard section. We've added some additional language to the definition of junk, which we discussed at the last meeting. And I also made a couple of changes based on that first reading to the appointment process to the building inspector, based on the feedback received from councilor board that night. I certainly would not, given the hour of the evening already, want to go through each individual section individually, but I'm certainly able to answer any questions that members of the council or the public have tonight.
Tom, you have questions?
Yeah, can I ask you to go to page thirty-two? And in here, it, it, this is just a, if you go to duties, it says his or his slash her duly authorized agent, okay? What happens if you need more than one agent? I guess that's the easiest way I can ask the question, because it, it, it's limiting in its, in that form, and I'm just curious as to.
Yeah, as I explained at the last meeting when I was in front of you, I tried not to make any significant substantive changes as much as I could. In this particular section, all I did was change the title to Planning and Zoning Administrator and add the his/her. The duly authorized agent in, in actuality is myself. When the planning and zoning administrator is not available to make interpretations of the zoning ordinance, I take upon that responsibility as the director of the department. And under my duties, under my job description, I do have the ability, in my absence and the absence of the planning and zoning administrator, to further delegate that authority to the assistant planner. So there is a procedure in place that I don't know necessarily needs to be within the ordinance language, but I, I'm relatively comfortable with the way it's written.
Okay, good on that one. Now, page thirty-five.
Yes.
You took out the, can you tell me why you took out the explanation or the criteria that the zoning board must use to, in rendering a decision?
The reason I did that is because over the course of my close to nineteen years in this profession, the criteria that the legislature and the courts have repeatedly updated and determined to be appropriate for zoning boards to consider, I didn't want to have to have to come in front of you every time the legislature makes a change to those sections. So I thought it was more efficient to refer specifically to the statute that delegates those powers to the zoning board.
Okay. Do you provide anything to an applicant for a variance?
We absolutely do. The criteria is in the applications for every.
Good, thank you.
Madam Chair, I would move the ordinance to a third and final reading.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Boyd.
If, if I may, just because I'm a stickler for this.
We just finished the motion, then I'll let you.
Thank you, Tim.
And seconded by Counselor Mahon. You don't need it. Yeah, you do.
You haven't opened up the hearing yet?
Oh, don't. You sure you want me to? Could I please?
Come, come, don't worry about it.
She likes to move meetings long.
I sure do. It never works, though. I like to open the hearing at eight forty-six.
Just in time for Nelson Disco.
Nelson, do you have anything? No. Any comments? Seeing them, close the hearing at eight forty-seven.
Madam Chair, move the proposed zoning ordinance amendments to a third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Boyd, seconded by Counselor Mahon. Any other comments or suggestions? Paul?
Under consent agenda or under?
Consent to the consent agenda, please.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, seven, zero, zero.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for interrupting you, but I have to do that, Chairman, best of the planning board quite a bit as well, so.
Nice job, Tim.
Nice job, Tim, good work. To you and the team.
Okay, legislative updates from state reps. Anybody? Don't see any. Tom manages report, Eileen.
Okay, this is a very important one that I, I was not aware of, that beginning July first, two thousand and fifteen, the New Hampshire Hands-Free Law takes effect. In addition to barring adult drivers from holding their cellphones and talking, drivers under the age of eighteen will be barred from all mobile phone use. Fines will begin at a hundred dollars, increase to two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars for second offenses, and then top out at five hundred dollars. The other thing I wanted to let you know is that the, the Merrimack Youth Association, MYA, has not submitted their financial statements since October two thousand and fourteen. And as per their contract that the council has put together and that both organizations have signed, two payments have been withheld totaling thirty-six thousand dollars. And the way that it works is that on, the year ended on June thirty, two thousand and fourteen, and they have until October thirty-first to submit their, their, of two thousand and fourteen, and we have not received it yet.
So it was due at the end of October?
Yep.
And just one quick question for me. They're aware that it's being withheld and for what reason? We've had correspondence? Okay. Yes, Finley?
Eileen, have you had any communication from the MYA? Or has it just been us corresponding with them?
Paul has spoken to them.
Okay.
In the March, I received a phone call from the former secretary, she was in Florida. She said when she got back in beginning April, she'd get the stuff needed for the auditors. I asked the auditors if they received the information, they have not received the information as of April eighth.
Wow.
And they are fully aware of we're not paying them.
I can't read their minds, but I, what I sense is a total collapse of the MYA. It bums me out a little bit, but it is what it is.
Yes, Tom? And then Dan?
Yeah, I'd like to have this put on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss. There is a thirty-day notice provision in the, in the agreement for termination of the agreement. That certainly is a possibility, but I think we ought to have a, a discussion about this issue, especially after what we went through with them last year over the condition of their books. And the police investigation into the operations of the baseball program. And their promises to do better, to come up with a more unified accounting system. And here we are in April, almost May, and we have no report from them. So I just think it's time that we have another discussion about whether or not we're going to continue the contract or not.
Okay. Counselor Dwyer?
I take a little less harsh view in the sense, I think the organization is, is a great organization, they do a lot in town. I just think they, they, my simple approach to this is I don't feel the money is that important to them. So they, they raise funds within themselves and maybe it's just time, obviously, that they just don't need our funds. If they really wanted it, obviously, they, these documents would have been in place by now. So I'm not eager to, to, to discuss further action about it, but in the, in the bigger sense, I would rather just keep it a little bit more on the light side at the, at this moment and just say the money's not important to them at this time. Thank you.
Any other comments? Jody?
If we're going to have an agenda item, we're going to have a discussion, could we just be sure that we communicate with the MYA officers that that's going to take place so that they have every opportunity to be present and be part of the conversation? I think that would be fair. Thank you.
That's fine. Any other comments? Anything else, Eileen? That's it? Consent agenda, none. Old business, none. New business. Did any of the, I'm looking at people. The town council to consider appointing the following recommended individuals to town committees pursuant to chapter article four dash eight. Are any of the recommended, no. Okay. Because depending upon if someone, I don't think the people who are being.
Matthew's not here. Nancy, Melissa Kolesky.
Okay. So we have Julie Poole for Parks and Recreation Committee, full position. Melissa Kolesky, hopefully I probably murdered her name, but Parks, close enough? Parks and Recreation is an alternate position, and Matthew Thornton for an alternate planning board position.
Move approval.
Move approval, all three?
All three.
Okay. Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Finley Rothaus. Bill, would you like to speak to the motion?
Very briefly, it's, it's really exciting to see three new people step up and volunteer to be on committees. I think it's even more gratifying. I'm sure Counselor Dwyer will appreciate that we got two new people coming onto Parks and Rec. Lot of growth going on, especially at Watson Park, so I think having two new people serving with Parks and Rec is, is only a, a sign of things to come of getting some new eyes and some new faces involved with what, what's going on with Parks and Rec. And Tom Nancy and I had the privilege of interviewing Matthew, new to the community, Navy veteran. Navy veteran, and very eager to learn and serve and be a part of the process here in Merrimack. So we're very grateful for Matthew stepping up, so very enthusiastically supporting the nominations.
It is nice getting new blood in. It's really nice. Okay. Yeah. All those... Any other discussion? All those in favor of the appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, seven zero zero. Okay, Eagle Scout project proposal. And Matt Casperius is here. Eagle Scout candidate Justin Kaludi is proposing to build a canoe storage rack at Wasserman Park. This was submitted by Matt. And we are... I love these. Just to let you know, we love these.
The tri-fold of the presentation itself.
We love the whole thing, just to be able to... Of the projects that we've been fortunate enough to receive from the Eagle Scouts, it's like this. And I also enjoy listening, so go right ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my presentation. My name is Justin Kaludi. I'm the Senior Patrol Leader of Troop 424, which meets right across the road at Our Lady of Mercy. We actually held our own planning meeting tonight. I'm currently the rank of Life Scout within the Boy Scouts of America. The next and final rank within the organization is Eagle. One of the requirements for Eagle Scout is to complete a project benefiting a nonprofit organization other than scouting that is a nature other than general maintenance and demonstrates strong leadership. I selected for my Eagle project to benefit the Parks and Rec Department of Merrimack, New Hampshire, and by extension, the Town Council. Specifically, I wish to construct an additional boat rack at Wasserman Park where the kayaks and canoes and other boats that the town owns can be stored during the summer season. There is an existing boat rack that can hold a maximum of six boats. However, there are at least nine additional town-owned boats at Wasserman Park, three of which thus cannot be used because of lack of space and therefore take up storage that can be used several other ways, be it as an additional cabin for the summer camp or as storage space for something that is more weather sensitive. My proposal is to construct an additional rack with the same capacity of six boats as the original rack so that these at least three extra boats can be stored during the summer. Should the town obtain more boats, the rack can be used for that purpose as well. The rack itself will be enclosed within a fence. Obviously, it will have to be made out of something durable to withstand the brutal winters of New England. So to fill that requirement, the rack and the fenced enclosure will be constructed from pressure-chated wood designed specifically to withstand the weather and the winter. To prevent the rack itself from scratching the boats as they're taken on and off, the beams that they rest on will be covered in indoor/outdoor carpet. This carpet is the only aspect of the entire project that will require maintenance, and even then, it is very minimal. The excess carpet that I will be purchasing for this project will be given back to the Parks and Rec Department along with all additional funds that I raised throughout the project, and that, and those funds can be used to purchase additional carpet. As the rack is used, I estimate around every four or five years, the carpets will need to be replaced. This is dependent upon use and severity of weather. And that brings me to the costs and the fundraising. The estimated cost for the entire construction of the rack, the fence and enclosures, and then the additional supplies and tools needed will come to around four hundred and eighty-five dollars. This money will be funded through donations or by fundraisers that I will attend with my fellow scouts and families of those scouts. I have tentatively scheduled three fundraiser dates, although I doubt it will take three days to raise the four hundred and eighty-five dollars. It is still nice to have additional money when the...
Always.
The actual construction of the rack will be completed over the course of two to three workdays at my own house before final installation at Wasserman Park. These days will also be attended by myself and the scouts and families of Troop 424. My estimated completion date is around early to mid-August at the very latest. I have already attended a meeting with the Parks and Rec Committee, and they unanimously approved my proposal. That is my proposal to build a rack. Are there any questions?
Council members, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Justin, there's going to be something in the water over at Our Lady of Mercy, because it never ceases to amaze me that we go a year and you don't see two or three young boys coming here with a project for Eagle Scouts. So kudos to the scout masters and all the other people, the adults that are helping you do this. Great presentation, and thank you very much. The simple question, are you going to be digging... Just to clarify, because it wasn't mentioned, are you going to be creating any type of a hole in the location where you're going to put it so they're going to be anchored in the ground? Is that going to be your intent?
I apologize for not specifying.
That's okay.
There will be at least ten holes being dug. Not anything big, just enough to get six posts for the actual enclosure and then four for the rack itself. It won't be anything that will require excavation equipment, simply scouts and shovels.
And you've already talked with the... You've already worked with, as you said, Parks and Rec, but I'm assuming you talked with Director Casperius?
Yes, I've been working close with him, and I was approved by the board.
Okay. I wish you a lot of luck. And again, I just, you know, we just got through talking about the Parks and Rec Committee and the appointment and some of the things that are going on at Wasserman Park, you know, what this council has done to make a commitment to. We talk about it being one of the jewels of Merrimack. It is one of our crown jewels, so I really want to thank you for identifying a need and, you know, doing the legwork and bringing people together to build a project for the betterment of the uses of the beach down at Wasserman Park. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Tom Koenig?
All right, thank you. Can you tell us, maybe you did and I missed it, but tell us a little bit more about how this fits into the park relative to the canoe rack you said is there already? Are you putting them both in the same enclosure? You have two completely different setups or...
There is a pre-existing rack down at the beach that only holds a maximum of six boats. The town holds at least nine. I don't know the specific number, but I know there is not enough storage space to hold all the boats that the town owns. So my proposal is to build... It's an additional enclosure, an additional rack that will be constructed on the other side of the beach adjacent to the existing rack.
The other side of the beach, but adjacent to the existing rack? I need to understand what you mean by the other side of the beach. I would have assumed you meant opposite of where the current one is when you said those words, but then you added adjacent, so...
I think I used the wrong word. I'm sorry. There is a picture on the poster that gives a general idea of where it's going to be constructed. If you look at the existing rack, what do you say? It was like twenty-eight feet away from the other one?
There will be separation.
There'll be a separation?
Yes, there will be a separation.
That goes into the field? That's the picnic field there or...
All right, so...
Am I just misunderstanding where it's located?
So there's a grass area that's before the dock that when you first come down the hill, there's a large grassy area.
Yeah.
There are a few trees that then separate it from the beach. Right after those trees and a few bushes is the original rack. And then several feet, if you're looking at it, looking at the lake itself, several feet to the right, there is a large divot that cuts through, probably because just of erosion. So I suggested that we use that divot as a line of symmetry. So it's about twenty-eight feet from the end of the first rack to the beginning of my proposed rack.
Okay, but it's still going to be some distance from there until you get to the beach or the dock area?
From where the water starts, it is probably around twenty to thirty feet. At least it was at the time I went down. Obviously flooding could change that, but I don't anticipate any problems with the water coming up to make that an issue.
No, I wasn't worried about the water. I'm just looking at people's access and ability to get around that and use the beach still and things like that.
Yeah, there's still plenty of room left on the beach.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, Tom?
Yeah, just as a point of information, that other rack was also an Eagle project. Oh. Pardon? Yeah. About six years ago, maybe? Yeah, the young man was up against a deadline. He was turning eighteen.
I think I remember that.
He was turning eighteen. He had like, he had like two months to do it.
You're not in the same position, are you?
No, I turned sixteen a month ago, so...
See, you made a face. It's a face.
But anyway, anyhow, it's, you know, it's just, like I said, a point of information is that that rack is, was another Eagle project.
Jody?
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Justin, very much. I just wondered if you would please announce your fundraising dates, the event and the location, so that anybody at home who might want to support your project could write those down.
Of course, the current fundraisers are still tentative. However, I have blocked out specific days that I'd hope to have them. The first is Saturday, June twentieth. Yes, it is, sorry. The first is Saturday, June twentieth. It is a bake sale at the Tractor Supply Co.
Twenty-seven is the...
Yeah, and then the following weekend, on Saturday, June twenty-seventh, is a car wash at the Exit Eleven Gulf Station. And then, yeah, and then Saturday, July eleventh, to finish the fundraising, is a bake sale at the Exit Twelve Shaws.
Maybe my car will be dirty on that day.
Dirty or not, it's always a good...
It's always a good. It's usually dirty now, but... Any other questions or comments? You've done a really good job.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, I know it's not easy to stand, sit in front of us and responding to questions, and you're very articulate. I'm not sure if you practiced, but it appears like you did, and it showed. If not, then you're a natural.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, he's not a senior patrol leader for nothing, right?
Well, there you go.
That's correct. Madam Chair, I would move that the Town Council endorse the proposed canoe storage rack at Wasserman Park as proposed by Eagle Scout candidate Justin Kaludi, and that he continue to coordinate his efforts with the Parks and Rec team for successful completion of the project.
Motion made by Counselor Boyd, seconded by Counselor Rothaus. Would you like to speak to the motion at all, Bill?
I've already said...
What you want?
My prayers.
Okay. Finley, anything?
I appreciate all the efforts and a job well done, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
No other suggestions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven zero zero. Congratulations. Now you got to go do the work.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
The council's going to take a five-minute break, stretch, and recess.
They do it all the time, so...
Okay, next on the agenda, Agricultural Commission bylaws. Chairman Bob McKay of the Town Council to consider approval of the recommended Agricultural Commission bylaws was received and has been reviewed by the town attorney, and the changes that he has recommended have been included. Is that correct?
That's correct. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Council. Thank you for allowing us time. This has been a work in progress. We think we finally have it tuned up right. Does anybody need a copy for review?
No.
Any questions I could answer?
There have been no changes?
This is entirely new document, Tom.
Right, but it's...
No, if you have the file... That's correct.
Yes, Eileen?
I just want to clarify. Eber Courier had called Becky and said to her, could I have a copy of the... Do you have a copy of the bylaws? And she said, no, I've never seen any. So he brought over a copy that he had that hadn't been adopted recently or that kind of thing. So we sent it over to Carrie Anne, who you just met, Carrie Anne Roman, over at Matt Upton's office. And she went through it to make sure that it is compatible with all the other ordinances and bylaws and things like that that have already been done for other committees. So she feels comfortable with the document as it is.
Excellent. Okay, are there any questions about this document? Yes, Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Page four, Section eleven, under removal of members. My first immediate response was, is it needed? And then looking at paragraph two seems to be in conflict with our volunteer appointment policy, which Counselor Mahon and I had dedicated some time doing. And that Section two kind of... Well, paragraph two of Section eleven kind of took me, took me astray.
You left me confused. I don't understand what your problem is.
We have a volunteer appointment policy.
Okay.
And I'm saying that this section is incompatible with our volunteer appointment policy, especially as it relates to paragraph two of Section eleven.
How does it conflict?
Because...
I'm just curious.
We don't have language in our volunteer appointment policy, and this was something that...
Having to do with removal.
That's correct. Having to do with, shall file with the town clerk a written statement of reason for any cause enumerated above for removal under the section.
Okay.
And we had talked about this...
Well, if that was removed because it was not enumerated in... We're just talking about the volunteer.
Correct.
You could still, number one, could still complete the action.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay, so that's what I'm wondering.
And the minutes of the Town Council would still reflect the action the council took and discussions that they had.
Right. I don't have a problem with removing that particular item.
We got this back from legal. It was their recommendation. We made a red-line copy. We approved it. One sentence doesn't mean it can't win.
Right. Yes, Dan?
I think it should stay. I mean, just because people volunteer, there could be some nasty people, could be extreme rudeness. There could be all kinds of things, you know? Life happens. We read stuff in the newspapers all the time. I don't see... It's a pretty harmless couple of sentences that I think helps other committee members who may be feeling that one member in their midst is causing harm. And this gives them a little bit of an out to come to the council, come to the town manager, and, you know...
I think what you're... But we're going to be keeping number one, so you can still remove. It's the number two.
Right. The number two, if it's in conjunction, I don't... I'm at a loss to see why number two is offensive in some way.
Because it would open up to a he-said, she-said, you know...
Which would occur on the number one anyway.
That's correct.
Right, so I guess that's why I'm...
It was already, it's already been stated that the reasons for removal would be reflected in the minutes, and the town clerk's responsible for maintaining those records. So it's duplication.
Finley?
Is this something new that we're going to be doing with committees? Or is this the only one? Or is it...
No, no, we can...
This is the only one that doesn't have a set of bylaws?
We have... No, no, no. I know bylaws, but do we have removal clauses in all the others? Because I don't think I've ever read or seen, because I know on occasion we... Well, we've never done the removal thing, never been able... Well, we've never done the removal thing, never been able to, if we wanted to, I thought.
Um, I, I defer to Bill again. Or Tom.
Some of the, um... Committees or commissions are covered by statute, and the statute has provisions in there for removal, which are similar to this. Okay? So, that's... And, and you're right, it's never, to my knowledge, it's never been used.
And I don't remember seeing it before.
And this commission in particular isn't an official, uh...
Statute.
Statute.
Well, there is, there is, there is language that enables the establishment of the commi... of the Agricultural Commission.
Right.
Okay, but it's not as detailed to say. The one I'm familiar with is Conservation Commission.
Right. Or Zoning or Planning Board. You know, there's some, there's some tougher language in those, those committees.
Yeah.
Uh, this one is more like almost a loose association of volunteers and...
So, you know, um...
I mean, I, if, it's okay. It has to be a big...
I have no problem with it. I think it's appropriate.
But, and, but if we're going to do it, we should now contemplate, uh, the reflection in other of our committees.
We, we can't, because each particular committee is responsible for creating their own set of bylaws. We have no jurisdiction as to what they put or choose not to put into their set of bylaws.
Then why am I even looking at these tonight?
That was going to be my next question.
So, you'd rather just see no, no, no bylaws associated with the Agricultural Patrol Commission?
I don't know. No, I, I, I'm happy that Chairman McCabe is here with a set of bylaws. I don't, I, I'm happy. I think it's important.
Okay, and, but in order for you to accept the, this report right here, you'd just like to take out...
Well, look at the chatter. I had the chatter in this for months. Check it out. One time I would have been able to impress you as that chatter.
Are you saying chatter or chatter?
Chatter.
Chatter?
That's, that's...
Chatter.
I have no idea.
Okay, I think, you know, personally, I think number two is just redundant. I don't think it, I don't want to say redundant. It doesn't need to be the exact number one.
I really don't care. It's fine with me, but...
Number one accomplishes it. Now, on the volunteer, is the removal addressed in it?
No, it's an appointment policy.
It's an appointment policy.
It's not a removal policy.
Nope, it's not a removal policy. That's...
There's nothing that's in there that says that, because you have the, you brought it up.
When, when I, when, when I first sat down to rewrite that volunteer appointment policy, that was one of the pieces that I contemplated, and it was, it, it was removed at, at the end for the simple fact that if you, if you enunciated a, a reason why you were removing a particular person, it opened, it literally opened up that door for...
So, that wasn't addressed at all?
Wasn't addressed at all.
We're looking at the chatter to see how it is addressed about bylaws.
For the Rail Transit Authority, we're allowed to establish our own bylaws, and one of the bylaws that we established was an attendance.
I know it's been spoken about.
For non, non-elected designees or, or appointed members, because some people under the statute are appointed because they represent the mayor. Um, and, uh, so, or the mayor is actually the, the appointee. So, it's a little tough to say to somebody, "Hey, you're not showing up or throwing you off." So, we had to set something else up, but anyway.
I'm not sure, is it my understanding, bylaws are not required, but they're encouraged, because that's...
That's, that was also written into...
The parameters under which they function.
Correct.
And what your question is, do we in fact then need to approve them if they're not a requirement?
You know, I don't remember any of the other committees that we have in town presenting any sort of amendment. You know, if they amended their bylaws, usually it's approved at the board level. It's not brought to, to this body for, for... For confirmation. Review and confirmation.
But this is, this is your first ever effort to create a bylaws. Is that correct?
To finish them.
To finish them.
We've been working on it for seven or eight years.
But you haven't been operating under bylaws in the past. You've been operating under understanding.
On a limited basis. There's, there's some reference to them in our minutes, but on a limited basis. And then the chair changed, and this is housekeeping now. We're trying to get it done.
We'll get it done one way or the other.
I was...
Is there any harm in approving it?
I have no problem with it. Works good for me.
I mean, it's probably overkill.
It, it is overkill. I mean, that's, you know, it's, it's, it's the Agricultural Commission's responsibility to approve their bylaws.
Well, we can, we, maybe we don't have to do a motion. We'll just do it by consensus, so it becomes a little less official, saying, yes, this looks good.
I mean, I, I mean, I had some questions, but I'm, like I said, I'm happy that they have a set there presenting a set of bylaws. I think it's important.
The experts of the chatter.
Yeah, but this, this is for us.
But I need it in front of me.
Well, why are you looking? Why don't you ask those questions?
Well, the only other question that I had on page four was section thirteen, number two. I did not really understand what that section is telling me as it relates with the authorization of the Town Council.
From time to time, we have a need for advisors, extension service, people, uh, people like that, and, um, it's non-voting volunteers.
Right.
So, I think that's why this is included.
We don't have to... Okay.
But you, but it's written here, "Under contract with the authorization of the Town Council," and that's, that, that's the section I just, I, I can't wrap my arms around.
To show their expertise, experiences, their knowledge. Doesn't work.
We might... We might be hiring them for their expertise, and they would be...
Not necessarily hiring, but the extension service is free to us. But they're the experts in their field. Department of Ag, we, we consult with them. We, you know, we do this with them all the time. They're constantly changing. They're on the cusp of it, you know, more than we are.
Oh, sure.
And they, they would share the nation's experience.
It's set under contract. That's why I just tossed out, would they be...
We're not, we're not, we're here to hire anybody else.
Do you have any other?
No.
Okay, upon review of the chatter, it has been determined that we don't need to approve your bylaws. But I think that's okay. Um, I think what we can do is recommend to you that number two, under section eleven, may not be necessary.
May not.
May not be, because it is, um...
Duplicative?
Number one covers it. Are there any other recommendations or suggestions that the council may? So, by consensus, we approve, but it's not an approval. We say, "Good job."
It's kind of like a non-meeting.
It's like a non-meeting.
You need to vote?
We don't need to vote. We say, "Good job, nice bylaws." We have those suggestions, but you do with it as what you do with it.
Thank you all.
Bob, thanks for the question, David.
We hope you enjoyed the last two and a half hours.
But we've also learned as a result of this.
Well, thanks for having us.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks for being on our show, Bob.
Yep.
You never know. We may be consulting with you one of these days.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Pennechuck Waterworks requests for pilot for solar project with Pennechuck Corporate Corporation Chief Operating Officer Donald Ware. You must be Mr. Ware? Pennechuck is requesting that the town consider accepting a payment in lieu of taxes for a proposed one-megawatt solar field that it is considering constructing in Merrimack. And we have received a packet when we came here.
Our latest one of yours, a packet before you, let me set a table for the request that we're making. Uh, three years ago, uh, one of the charges of the new board of directors was to look at alternative sources of energy, sustainable sources of energy. And so, back in two thousand and twelve, we investigated the potential of building this solar field that we're looking at. At the time, when we costed it out, the plan...
Is your light on? Okay, push it just in case. It becomes a brighter green.
It's bright green now.
Okay, thank you.
So, at the time when we looked at it, the electrical costs were almost twice what we could buy off the grid. And so, uh, you know, was decided that that was not a time to pursue this. Uh, spin forward a couple of years, and, uh, effectively, efficiency of solar cells have, uh, gone from about eighteen to twenty-two percent efficiency. Cost of production has come down. Uh, the federal, uh, tax break is still good through December of thirty-first to two thousand and sixteen. We decided we would look at the potential of building this field again and whether it was cost-effective. So, we went out and got proposals from a number of different vendors. That pricing has come back. We also pursued, uh, some grant money through the, uh, New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission, and have been offered a three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant. And, uh, the last part, though, of making this work is that this, these solar cells are subject to a local property tax. And the value of this field estimated with the land roughly three million dollars. And the property taxes on the field on an annualized basis takes this project from being one where it, out of the gate would be beneficial to the customers to negative to the customers. And so, we thought we would pursue, you know, requests of the town. Uh, I think Eileen has given you the legislation. There's state, a state RSA that allows the town to consider a payment in lieu of taxes uh, for renewable energy projects. That being said, you know, if the town were to make a decision to grant that, it's, it's something that you need to treat everybody equally, as I'm sure you know. And so, there's some considerations here for the town in this request. I think what makes this project unique, and if you look at what you have before you, is its location, at least from our perspective, in that the land that this sits on is watershed land. And development and watershed land are typically not compatible, except for the fact that actually EPA and, uh, the DES have, have recommended in the pursuit of sustainable energy, the use of watershed land for solar cells. And, uh, so it's actually the one compatible development use for watershed land. And, uh, so, uh, it is unique in that perspective. We also own the land, so there's no cost in the land, which helps keep, make the cost competitive in terms of what the power purchase provider could, uh, could provide for us on a twenty-year basis. And, um, you know, so where, where we're at is, is, you know, we would like to, you know, talk with you about whether there is any interest in the town considering a pilot. In order to make the cost to the customers neutral out of the gate, this facility will produce roughly twenty-five percent of the power for Pennechuck Waterworks. Uh, and, um, we would need to have a pilot at fifteen percent of the valuation in order for this to be a break-even out of the gate based on current pricing with the three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant. And, let me just give you a little visual more in, you know, in terms of what the, you know, this, I, it'd been asked, is this facility going to be visible from any place? Unless you're in a plane, the answer to that is no. Uh, in fact, if you go back to the first, uh, aerial photography there, I gave some rough dimensions up to the Harris Pond Mall and condos over to the DW Highway. Uh, it is in the wooded area that's been maintained through forestry practices, uh, for the watershed. And so, it would not be visible, uh, to the general public. And, uh, Eileen had also asked, indicated that you might have some interest in, you know, the percentage of our customers that are in Merrimack. And so, what I provided on the third sheet is just a quick view of the fact that we have two-hundred-ninety-five customers in Merrimack. Uh, the largest of which, which is obviously Anheuser-Busch. Uh, our to, uh, the total revenues, Merrimack accounts for four-point-one percent of the total revenues to Pennechuck Waterworks. About nine-point-six percent of the usage and about one-point-one percent of the customers. And what this would do is, is that, like I said, again, in, over time, this is a twenty-year power purchase agreement. So, over time, uh, this would result in a flat power price. And as power prices go up, and I'm sure you've all experienced it, our power price just went from six-point-oh-two cents per kilowatt hour to over nine cents a kilowatt hour. Uh, and when you're purchasing six million kilowatt hours, it's a big number. And so, this provides us a stable platform for electricity for the customers for the next twenty years. This is, you know, a savings that gets passed directly through to the customers, or a cost avoidance, you know, as the case might be. And so, we, you know, we think it's a project that makes good sense, certainly for our customers. Uh, we're here before you to see whether it makes good sense for the town and the residents of the town. As I indicated, I think this is a unique project in that if somebody else came in with a similar, similar scope project, uh, they would have to acquire the land first. There's no land acquisition cost here that would be significant. Additionally, we're unique in that we don't have to go through net metering. The water treatment plant will utilize one-hundred percent of the power that's produced from the, uh, solar field. And, uh, also, uh, the federal tax credits that would make this work are going away December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. If we move ahead with this, we'll, the project will be online. The federal tax credits are what helps the power purchase provider able to produce the power at the price that becomes competitive. And, uh, you know, uh, from the town's perspective, uh, it would result in this property going from current use to, uh, an industrial use, uh, which would bring in, you know, depending upon the valuation, on the order of about a upfront payment of about a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars. Currently, on a pro rata basis, the last sheet, if you're looking at, we're paying about a thousand eighty-seven dollars a year. If we paid fifteen percent of what we believe the valuation would be, we would be paying about ten-thousand-nine-hundred dollars a year in, uh, property taxes, or a net increase to the town of about ninety-eight-hundred dollars. Again, that being said, you know, if somebody else comes in with a similar project, you run the risk of having to give that up as well.
So, my understanding is, if this is accepted, our future solar will have to abide, but whatever, by whatever decision we make.
That would be my understanding. That's as I understand it from our attorneys.
From the regs, yeah.
We'll be careful. There's two distinctions here. One is the, um, what I will call household solar, which is defined differently. And this is a generation.
Generation.
And this is generation. So, it's, there's, there's, there's two distinct classes here that the stat, that, that, that the law, uh, talks about. Uh, and, and there, and there, there's two distinct treatments for them.
Gotcha. So, this is generations?
Right.
Yes, Jody?
Regarding that point, if, um, if another project were to come forward, would we still have the option of saying yea or nay?
No, no.
So, if we approve this, then we have to approve any project that comes forward?
That's my understanding. If it's generation?
You would have to approve, um, you would have to approve the, um, reduced tax amount.
It's not that you're approving the project.
Right.
But you would have to approve the tax, the way we deal with the taxes.
I believe it would still have to go before the planning board. Is that correct?
Yes. This requires site plan approval. Uh, again, where we're at is, is we don't want to move forward with the project because it doesn't make economic sense if the town won't support the concept of the pilot.
You would still need to accept a twenty percent value payment for any, the value of any future point?
Right, but say if they wanted to put a proposed, a proposed project on a piece of land that we just deemed was inappropriate, would we still have the opportunity to say, "No, we don't want that project on that particular piece of land"?
It's not with regard to zoning.
The pilot, it, it, there's two, there, there's a couple of steps here. One is what you're talking about, is a site approval, which would either be a zoning issue, depending on where they wanted to put it, and, or, or the, and the planning board. Okay, so that's, that's one step. So, that's where, that's where you would either get the, the approval or the not approval for the citing of something on a piece of property in town.
So, technically, are we just approving the tax issue? We're not approving the project and its location. We're just approving the tax issue.
Once, once we issue a pilot, then we have to, anybody else comes in with a generation... Once, once we issue a pilot, then we have to, anybody else comes in with a generation project, okay? We have to offer them similar terms for that pilot.
Okay. Thank you. That, that, yeah, I get it now. Thanks very much.
And that's why it's here, before the planning board.
Right. There, there is a significant investment in going through the site plan process. We don't want to pursue that. You know, if the next step down, we spend that money and then we come to this group and the group says, you know, we have reason not to support the pilot, then we will have spent thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars we wouldn't have otherwise spent.
Right. Thank you. Yeah. I guess, go ahead. I'll wait.
In layman's, if you can answer in simple terms, what's in it for Merrimack? What's in it, as, as the town leaders here, why, convince us why this is, is a good thing for us?
So, there are three things, basic things. A hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar payment for current use penalty tax, an additional nine thousand, almost ten thousand dollars a year in property taxes, and also, you know, support of sustainable energy. You know, a project that, again, with help from local government, state government, and the current market, makes sense economically for customers, some of which are in Nash, or, excuse me, in Merrimack.
Another question?
As far as the amount of voltage that this field would produce, is this powerful enough to be actually running pumps and motors? Or is this more for your facility, for its lights, its computers, more, less industrial wattage?
Well, it will produce about nine hundred kilowatt hours per hour at its most, you know, if the sun is bright and shining, it's a one megawatt field. The projected production over a period of a year is one point five million kilowatt hours.
And is that enough to run the pumps?
That will run at times the pumps and.
So, it's possible?
Yes. It, it'll produce, the plant uses about four and a half million kilowatt hours a year of power. So, it'll, it'll produce about thirty-three percent of the plant's requirement.
Thirty-three percent, okay. Thank you.
And you got enough transformers, you can run the pumps. All you need is the wattage behind it from the field to push them.
Finley?
Don, thank you for coming. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you as well.
My only, just comments and my thoughts. I recognize the difficulties in making something like this work, so the place that I would nor, you would normally see something like this, I would imagine, would be our industrial zone possibly. I'm not sure for a fact. So, my concerns might never materialize because it would make the cost too great. If it goes into a place like that, we're very limited in our commercial industrial space. And so, taking it out and allowing a fifteen percent payment as opposed, you know, to what the property would normally bring for tax, property tax revenues, is my concern. And I, and, and listening to Don tonight, it sounds like somebody wouldn't be able to do that anyhow financially, because it wouldn't be something that would be beneficial. But that, that's, that's my biggest concern of the whole thing.
Any other comments? Tom, can it?
Yeah, I guess I, I don't understand the, the payment in lieu stuff well enough to truly understand. If we were, if we grant this for your solar array, I, I'm hearing people say we have to do it for anybody that comes in under any circumstances. And I'm wondering if we can make some restrictions, saying that in your case, you're putting it on watershed land, you're putting it five hundred feet from the borders, you're only using up twenty-five percent of your property, or, or some number like that. Is it possible to put those kind of restrictions, that because they meet these criteria, we would accept this payment in lieu of taxes, so that somebody would have to only cover twenty percent or less of their property with solar arrays and something? It would suddenly make it a much more difficult process.
My understanding was, Eileen, you, go ahead.
Under the statute of the, the one that I gave you, under seventy-two, seventy-four, number five, it says if a municipality enters into a voluntary payment in lieu of taxes agreement with one owner or less see responsible for payment of taxes of a renewable energy facility, the municipality, upon request of the owner or less see for the payment of taxes or other blah, 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 shall offer a comparable agreement to the owner or less see of such facility.
I guess where I'm coming from is can that agreement include limitations or distinctions on how much of the property is covered and, and stuff like that?
You know what? And we.
I don't believe so.
Maybe back to the planning board?
We don't know that.
Back, back to the site evaluation, other planning board questions, zoning board questions, where I think we fall under that. But it's the money and the formula that must be equal treatment, is how I'm, is how I would interpret it. This is really about the financial package.
I understand that.
And so, when the next guy comes across, he must be given the same financial package.
Right.
But that being said, with the deadline and the credits vanishing soon, kind of wonder if there ever will be another one soon coming down the pike? If, if, if in fact, the solar government credits are, are vanishing.
Tim, did you have a comment you want to make?
I did. Relative to the, the role of the planning board and the town in terms of zoning, under RSA six seventy-two colon one, which is the general provisions for municipal land use regulation, there is a section that deals specifically with these types of facilities that I'll just read into the record. Therefore, the installation of solar, wind, or other renewable energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of renewable energy shall not be unreasonably limited by use of municipal zoning powers or by unreasonable interpretation of such powers, except when necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare. So, in essence, the state is limited the municipality's ability to use zoning to control these types of facilities. I just wanted to make that clear, that regardless of zone in town, if somebody were to come forward with this type of facility, it would have to be considered permitted under our ordinance.
In a residential neighborhood?
Yes.
Yep. Very interesting. I guess my major concern is setting precedents. I, I think it takes away, it's just giving blanket approval for all future projects. That's my major concern. And perhaps there's, maybe we need to do a little bit more research, whether it be getting information legally or from the planning board or zoning, I'm not sure. But at this point, I'm not ready to approve something that I don't understand the potential implications for in the future. Tom?
So, I, I appreciate the responses and, and I guess the further questions that I had was in understanding where this fifteen percent number came from and if there's some way that you can help us to understand.
Sure.
Justify that number. Is it, why is it fifteen and not twenty-five or, or five?
If, if you will indulge me, I'll go get my, my memory stick and put it in here, because I have the formulation that shows the plant usage, current cost of electricity, and all the assumptions behind it. And property taxes is one of the figures in there. So, as you adjust the property taxes, that's one of the drivers to the annualized cost for the power, because keep in mind that you're producing one and a half million kilowatt hours. So, if you were paying on a full three million dollar valuation, that would be about seventy-two, seventy-five thousand dollars a year, or about five cents a kilowatt hour. Okay? As that comes down progressively, that's what starts to make it attractive. That, because you have a fixed amount of power, you know, you know, you're going to use that one and a half million, and as property taxes go up, you're adding a cost per kilowatt hour to it.
So, rather than getting your memory stick, because I can't possibly understand all those numbers.
We believe that there's an equation.
In this meeting, I'll accept that. What I want to understand is your three million valuation number.
Okay. That's based on, when, when we went out and sought proposals, we sought them in two ways. One would be if we were the owner and a contractor came in and built this for us, and then we maintained it and operated it. The second formula was they came in and they build it, owned it, and financed it, and sold us power at a rate for a period of twenty years. Because we have no tax appetite, meaning we couldn't use the federal tax benefit, the power purchase agreement was the only one that, that worked out. And so, they gave us, we went out and they gave us a price per kilowatt hour, assuming that we paid the local property taxes, that we bought all the power from them, and that we provided them the land at one dollar. And I think that's one of the things that makes this unique, is that.
Well, I understand that.
Is, is that anybody else who goes and builds, you're not going to find land for a dollar. This is twelve and a half acres. You're going to add another thirty-three percent to the cost of any project that goes of this magnitude, just to buy the land for starters. And, and again, I, I appreciate the concerns that the town has, and I respect it. I'm a town resident, by the way. And this is really about what the town thinks makes sense for them. From our perspective, we're trying to make it work for our customers, and you're asking all the right questions. I try to provide you with the information.
So, I hate to push it too hard, but the three million number, I just am not understanding. You're saying that they said it would cost them three million to build it, or?
They're saying that the cost of building the facility would be about two point two million dollars.
Yeah.
And then add in the value of the land, someplace between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars to one point two million. So, you add the two together, and, and so, I use three million. If the valuation came in at three point five million.
So be it.
But, so be it.
But the power generation times, you know, the annual income from power generated times eight, twelve, fifteen years, whatever number you might use for valuation, does that even come close to three million? Or is it really say that this is not a practical thing to build from a business perspective?
Well, from a business perspective, what we're comparing is, is our expenses, because we will have no, our expenses in this case will be the property taxes and purchasing the power from the power purchase provider as opposed to from the grid. So, currently, we're buying power from the grid, from the supply generation side, and you're also avoiding the transmission cost in this case at a rate of about twelve point two cents a kilowatt hour. And so, what we're looking at is if you can buy from the power purchase provider at something less than that, and then take the property taxes and divide, you know, the one and a half million kilowatt hours into that, you're going to come up with your cost per kilowatt hour for that one and a half million kilowatt hours. That's what we're looking at for, from, for comparison purposes. Again, we're not going to have any investment in this.
Well, I, I understand that, but, but bear with me for a minute. If, you're saying that it's going to cost me three million dollars to build and, and equip this based on land and stuff like that. But is the, is the assessor going to come in, not knowing anything about what it costs you to buy it, and just say the value of that property with that plant on it is three million? Or are they going to say it's the revenue of the, of the plant times eight or times ten or something like that? They're going to look at the income generation potential of the, of the building to create the valuation, not necessarily what it cost you to build it?
Well, you know, valuation in this case, I believe, would not be an income approach. It would be an asset approach, because you've got a hard asset. It could be an income approach. As you know, there's different methods of valuation. All we could do was make an assumption. Ultimately, there is some risk here for us. Somebody comes in and says, we think this is worth five million dollars. We proceeded ahead, we get a fifteen, you know, we pay a fifteen percent pilot on that. It is what it is. Again, you know, our first pass at this indicates, you know, what we, we believe the valuation is about three million dollars, based on other communities. The town of Peterborough built a facility very similar in size that they have. And so, that's, that's our, our view of what it is.
And was it valued, or was it a pilot as well?
No, they, well, Peterborough was the owner, so Peterborough's not changing themselves, charging themselves their own taxes.
Well, I know, so we don't, that's not a comparable measurement of the value of it. I, I'd much rather see it valued at two million and take twenty-five or thirty percent pilot instead of three million and fifteen percent. So, I'm, I'm just trying to get a, a real understanding of how you would evaluate. And my guess is it would be based on the value of the property, not on the, the asset, because the asset has no value, as far as I'm concerned, if you look at it from an income perspective of a business.
And just a real quick, and to what, if the assessor, aren't you fearful of the assessor comes in and says, no, this is worth four point five? Now, doesn't your model change drastically? Is there a legitimate fear on your part and your company's part that the site might be overvalued than you had anticipated?
It's, it's a risk. Again, we've had, one of the things we, you know, have had is a preliminary valuation done. Like I said, and, and valuations are based on comparables. They're also based, in this case, as a utility, we're valued by the state. You, we pay taxes, as a matter of fact, to the town for the pipes that feed Anheuser-Busch and feed out into the area. And that valuation is based on a replacement cost new, less depreciation valuation. So, they look at the pipes and say, what would they cost to put in today and how much is depreciation has occurred? And that's the method of valuing utility property. It used to be original cost less depreciation, which was an income approach, which is what Tom is talking about. That would result in substantially less value. But if you look at the method of valuing utilities, right now, the state values ninety percent, actually ninety-five percent now, replacement cost new, less depreciation. They're looking at the actual cost to construct the asset in today's dollars, less depreciation on the asset. Solar cells depreciate very slowly, about seven tenths of a percent loss in efficiency per year. So, over the twenty years, they'll lose about fourteen percent of their efficiency, hence their value.
Can I interject just for a moment, just to be able to facilitate this? I'm wondering if, the, the main question here is whether we're willing to and choosing to take the option of the in lieu payment of taxes and stuff. You know, we can talk about valuation and how that's calculated, but we're not getting to the, the core of the subject. Tom, you said you had something. Eileen, you want to say something?
Well, the, the statute says that the, that it's, 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 subject to the laws governing the utility property tax under RSA eighty-three dash F. Okay? And I think that's what you were describing.
That is correct.
Okay? That's one piece. The other piece is you go down to Roman numeral seven. Okay? Or Roman numeral six. And any, any, any voluntary, no voluntary agreement entered into under this section shall be valid for more than five years. Okay? So, there's.
Which means this one, including this one.
We'd be rethinking it in five years.
In five years, they'd be, we'd be back here. Okay? Now, this is complex and a lot more than I think we ought to undertake on our own this evening.
I, I agree.
Okay? What's your, what's your timeline?
Well, unfortunately, the timeline is driven by the PUC, who contacted us in early March and said, you, you know, we want to work out a contract with you. They contacted us then in early April and said, oh, we have a contract for you. We need to have a decision by April twenty-ninth. So, I don't think there's time to properly digest this. I understand your reticence, and I think this is a case where we should just assume, shutter the doors and look and see where this is in a year or two. It's something that we will continue to revisit, you know, and see, you know, again, maybe the thirty percent tax credit continues, you know, gets continued on. You know, we, efficiency of solar cells is kind of bottoming out, probably not going to get a whole lot of reduction in cost there. But what's going to happen to electrical costs? You have in a discussion tonight that may have a great impact on that.
How ironic.
Yeah.
Don't you think?
Yeah. So, you know, all those things mesh together. It's, it's one of the challenges the board has looked at. There's been discussions about, oh, power costs are going to go up. No, power costs are going to go down. And so, again, it started with the board being interested in, in, you know, a lot of promotion by the DES and the EPA to the, to the fact that wastewater and water treatment plants are some of the largest energy users in the country. The typically ones in particular, water utilities have a lot of land typically because they own watersheds. And so, you can get the land or have the land at essentially very low cost in order to construct a large field. And so, they've encouraged that and said, you know, by the way, it is that compatible use. So, we investigated it. But from our perspective, it's about a right decision for the customers. We're not going to make a decision for our customers that says, we should do this and it's going to cost you twenty thousand dollars more a year for electricity, but that's good because we're building a sustainable infrastructure. It has to work economically. And, and by the same token, you know, you have raised a lot of valid concerns. And, and unfortunately, we are on, we were given very little time. unfortunately, we are on, we were given very little timeframe. We submitted the grant application back in October and, you know, basically got the, the go-ahead. Eileen, I think I contacted you, uh, maybe three, four weeks ago and said, "Can we sit down and, uh, you know, have a discussion?" Um, I had hoped we would have more time, but we don't.
Okay. Bill, then Eileen, then Dan. Bill?
Let me hold off, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eileen, you want to wait? Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Obviously, I think this is an in-depth, uh, subject matter. I would suggest maybe we could form a mini subcommittee with a couple of members here, get together with you, sir, and, uh, meet at Town Hall and get a little bit more in-depth. Looking at the hour, 10 o'clock, uh, after being here for four hours since we started at six. And, and just, this is a deep subject matter.
But you need a decision by April 29th. When's our next meeting?
Well, it's not like a quorum. A couple of volunteers stick up their hands and say, "Yeah, we'll meet at, uh, four o'clock on Wednesday and, you know..."
But a decision and...
And then we need another meeting.
I, I think the PUC, Steve Eckberg, who is the gentleman at the Public Utilities Commission, you know, was the one who gave me the April 29th and then there was a caveat in maybe a little extra time. They're hoping to go to governor and council with a recommendation. I think they have to go in for May 5th to hit their end of May meeting. Their concern is the legis, that this money may disappear that they have is available, so they want to get it committed before it disappears. So unfortunately, there is a tight timeframe. Certainly willing to meet with a group of, of folks from the town council if you want to meet, uh, but I don't want any sense of...
But I wouldn't want the decision made without, the council has to make the decision.
Sure, but if staff was involved, one, even one council member to sit on it with some staff and then that way we could have a little bit more, a lengthier discussion that it could be achieved tonight. It's just an idea.
I agree. And I don't disagree in terms of needing more information and research. It's just the timeline that I'm concerned about. I mean, how are, even if you extend it to the May 5th, when's that meeting? You just mentioned it.
14.
We're not going to have a meeting unless we have a special meeting for that.
Well, I'm suggesting that they meet next week, have their cabal come back to us by the 14th. And if at then we still don't have enough information, then I'm, I'm sure we'll all say no and we'll, we'll call it an evening. But, but, and if the timeline doesn't work out, then it wasn't in the cards. We were under the gun, but at least we're making an effort to go a little bit more in-depth with this and come back. And if we come back and the money's gone and the dates are past, well, we gave it, we gave it a shot.
I get you. Eileen?
I'm not sure that I know what source to go to to give you any more information about what the implication, the potential implications of this are town-wide in that short period of time.
Yes, Tom?
I just wanted to reiterate that I think it's a great idea. I think it's a wonderful idea and, and I'm excited about the possibility of something like that. I think that use of the land is great. Taking it out of current use, giving it a little bit more value is, is a great thing. My only concern is the 15 percent number and 15 percent of what?
Right.
Relative to turning around and giving that same offer to anybody else that comes along. Now, I, I really don't think there's a great chance that there's going to be somebody come along and want to take a massive chunk of industrial property and turn it, turn it into a solar farm, but that's...
Any property, though, is what we just hoped.
That's a possibility. So, if, if we could understand the implications or get a better, a stronger feeling on what valuation would be and where that number could land, I would be more comfortable. But I, I'm truly behind the, the project. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so we really sort of have a split decision here. I, I guess my concern is the timeline to be able to do some more research and what you're suggesting is, who would we go to to have more research to be able to get an objective?
We read in Tom's list of comments just now and questions, aren't lengthy. I think maybe they're, I, I don't participate, I don't, I don't, I just don't see a two, three-hour meeting, um, if some of the right people are in the room getting some...
If people want to be able to meet and get more information, I'm never against that, obviously, because one of my questions was having to get more information for research. Mine is the timeline. So are you suggesting that we might have to plan a meeting before the next...
No, I'm suggesting we gamble with the timeline. That's out of our control. So we'll get back when we, when we can.
So we'll just have our own meeting.
And if those dates are still extended to you, then it's in everyone's benefit, but if they're gone, then we gave it the best shot.
What I can do is I can contact the Public Utilities Commission tomorrow, say that we're looking at a timeline for some sort of decision by May 14th or, uh, May 15th and, uh, that, um, if that doesn't work for them, then there's no sense spending any time on it. If they say we can wait till May 15th, one suggestion from a valuation perspective is the State Department of Revenue Analysis, uh, who was responsible for the implementation of 83F relative to valuation could probably give you a pretty clean...
That's what scares me.
You can be on the committee.
That's what scares me.
Okay. Yeah, Joey, did you want to say something?
These valuations go, have been going all over the place and been driving municipalities crazy for years, you know?
I, I just like the idea, I like Dan's idea, I like the idea of just not saying no outright tonight and seeing if there's any way with the time constraints we have that we can get information and the possibility of it working. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but at least we've still got open communication and we can talk about it for another week or two.
And the implications of decisions?
Yes.
Yes, Tom?
We can always call, you can always call a special meeting.
Motion to table to the 14th.
Seconded. That's good.
Thank you, Paul.
And there will be a meeting. Who's going to volunteer? Dan, you are, I know.
Nancy.
Okay, so we're going to have Dan, Bill, and Finley. Anyone else? And you will keep us all informed, won't you?
Post your meetings and keep minutes.
Tabled. We have to vote on that.
Undebatable motion, Madam Chair.
Undebatable, we still have to vote on it.
That's what I'm saying, we have to do a motion. Okay, so...
Well, there's a, there's a table and motion on...
On the ta, on...
On the table.
Right. So that was made by Dan Dwyer and seconded by who?
Bill.
Bill Boyd. Okay. Any other discussion? No debate, is there?
It is not, it's not, non-debatable.
No, I just need clarification. So we're, it was by consensus these three, I'm sorry, thank you, Joey. You think I was new at this. I, we just, it was a consensus that three people would get together with the different powers to be, uh, there's no vote on that. You're voting, okay, then that's great.
But the vote is on tabling.
Chairman's rules. Chairman's rules.
Boy, I'm going to get powerful now. This vote is on the tabling of the topic. All those in favor of tabling of the topic, say aye.
Aye.
Seven, zero, zero.
Question, Madam Chair?
And by consensus, three people will get together, get information, do more research, be in contact with the rest of us. In the meantime, you left a way to the 14th or 15th?
And I will...
Is it...
Go ahead, Bill.
Is it possible to ask Eileen if Finley, Dan, and I, and I'm just offering this as a suggestion, if we could have Paul and Tim participate based on the land use and financial implications that are involved?
Well, I included staff. It was inherited that it would be not a room full of counselors, it would be staff.
Okay.
And three may be overkill. I'd be glad to step down and have you two.
No.
The chair is designating you.
I'm sure your work and your words will be, will be accurate enough for me.
I'm designating you as the chairperson of the subcommittee.
All hail Dwyer.
Paul, you may want to call over to Peterborough and talk to them about the analysis they went through. It may, may shed some light on it or give you...
Mr. Ware, you don't have a final, but you certainly have at least a direction that we're going in.
Well, I appreciate your, your time. I will follow up with Eileen tomorrow. Hopefully, the gentleman at the PUC will be in, uh, because again, I'm assuming if he says no, I need to know by May 5th, that, you know, that kind of brings the discussion to a close and, you know, don't need to spend people's valuable time on it.
Great.
If he gives us a bye to the 15th, I'll let you know as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Doc.
Okay.
10 o'clock roll.
You gotta be kidding. We've never found...
Are we pressing on or are we invoking the 10 o'clock? I don't know how long this one's going to go. Okay.
After, after all these people waiting. Okay, NRPC Route Bicycle and Pedestrian Corridor Plan Proposal, submitted by Assistant Planner Don Polley, although you do have backup here with Tim Thompson, to ask the town council to accept and authorize NRPC's proposal dated January 22nd, 2015. This proposal does not require any additional funding and would help the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan Work Group with implementation of the adopted 2014 Master Plan update. So go right ahead, Donna.
Thank you. Again, my name's Donna Polley. I'm the Assistant Planner. With me, I have Desiree Faltz, a member of our planning board, and the Chair of our Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan Work Group. So we're here before you today with a proposal we've received from NRPC. And why we, why we receive this proposal is, um, our master plan was updated in January 2014 and it has several action steps regarding bicycle and pedestrian. We also received a letter from NHDOT just a few months before this was adopted in response to, um, a project in their jurisdiction of DW Highway that the planning board had required a sidewalk for, which is just a typical requirement in our site plan and subdivision regulations. They then come, have come back to us saying they support the sidewalks in their jurisdiction, however, not until we have a plan for Route 3. So now we have set up a subcommittee, subcommittee essentially of the planning board and they've been working on setting up, um, kind of a procedure for inventory, finding the gaps, seeing if Merrimack needs more sidewalks and just kind of beginning the process. We've received this proposal from NRPC of how they would help us and when it costs any more money, it's all covered under our dues that we already pay anyway. So, anything missing or adding?
Oh, you, you got it pretty good. So again, we're just, we're looking for the approval to proceed with the NRPC proposal to get that first phase done so that we can sort of unlock, uh, the DW, um, Highway, DW Highway corridor for, um, potential sidewalk developments. There's been, there were some holdups on some of the projects that had come through there because of the DOT saying, "We won't approve things piecemeal until you have a whole plan." So that's, that's the importance of the...
And that letter has been submitted.
Right. You have it in your pockets. So with that, we'll open it up to discussion and questions.
Yes, Eileen?
Um, when the DOT was saying that they would not allow the, you know, that they would not concur with the sidewalk and, um, approval until a sidewalk plan was put into place, are you talking about, um, putting the sidewalk in their right-of-way or are you talking, because they certainly can't have any control over what other people, um, are, are doing on their land?
Right. Um, they're more concerned with their right-of-way. Um, so yes, if a project came and it was able to have a sidewalk totally on their property, then I think we still go for curb cuts and everything, but they couldn't, they couldn't come back to us and say, "Right."
So it would be on the, on the DOT's right-of-way?
Right, but it's outside, it's, it's within their jurisdiction, but it's not because if it's on the property, the actual property owner's property, then they couldn't really control. They would just control the actual curb cuts and entrances onto their right-of-way.
Just, um, in my experience, which was quite some time ago, and I said this to you before the meeting, um, we had, um, were requiring sidewalks on just another Route 3 and, um, the state actually made us sign an agreement that we would maintain and keep them free of snow. And we had to sign that we would do that. So I just want to caution everybody that, um...
We already have those agreements.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's why our little snow buggy toodles down the Route 3 all the way down to exit 10.
Dan?
And not every time, either.
No, but the fact of the matter is the, the State Supreme Court back in 1898, 1899 ruled against the city of Concord because they were putting in a sidewalk ordinance requiring the property owner to maintain, to clear the, clear the sidewalk. And the Supreme Court declared that to be a tax and it was unfair and inequitable and therefore it was invalid. So now you're required to, we are required to, to clear those sidewalks and maintain them, okay?
And so that would be true for the state ones as well?
Yeah. So, you know, it's, 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 you know, it's, 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 it's the way it is in New Hampshire. It's difficult. It's something that I've raised before in front of the planning board when I was the council's representative, that you were giving us essentially a, they're, they're giving us, the council, an unfunded mandate. We have to do this. And that was further reinforced about four or five years ago when a gentleman in a scooter up in Tilton complained that he couldn't get to Market Basket and he took him, he took the state to court because they said, "Oh, we don't have to maintain these all the time." And the court said, "Oh, yes, you do. You put them in, you got to do it." So this is, this is the, again, the choice that we're faced with, okay, with, with this whole thing. And these are the kinds of things, you complain about the language in our collective bargaining agreements that built up over time, adding these little pieces here and there to take care of things. All of a sudden now, it's turned into a big expense. And these are the kinds of things, there's a lot of, lot of cities and towns across the country that are in financial trouble because they've got these little piecemeal things that they got put in over time, all right, that they have to maintain because they put it in, um, and it's getting outside of their ability to do that. And that's, you know, I'm done.
So is the question, Tom, I mean, if I understanding is correct, you're asking to allow us to have the NRPC do an assessment?
Correct.
And basically strategize as to what the suggestions are, where they should be and where they should not be?
Right. They would be, um, creating a base map, going through and actually doing like a windshield camera, something that we're not really equipped to...
And this is, we would recommend that this is the plan.
Right, and then they would do the final plan.
And what you're suggesting or implying is, that's all nice and good, but once the suggestion's there, are we in fact going to do anything with it because of those restrictions?
We have no control. The planning board controls the whole thing. We don't. They can't, we, when we accept the street, we accept the sidewalk. If there's a sidewalk attached to a street, when they can bring us these street approval, the acceptance of the street, we're accepting the, we're accepting the sidewalk too. So they want to come to us beforehand and say, "Is this a good idea or will you, will you agree to this?"
So, so what the NRPC is suggesting is in fact something that could be implemented without our, any further agreeing. Ah.
Yeah, and then we got the expense of it.
That's, okay, because that helps me understand it. So if we agree to the NRPC's assessment, we're saying, "Okay, whatever they come up with, we are automatically agreeing with."
No. So you're...
That's what's passing. Are, are we being, um, implying permission that we agree with that? Go ahead.
What we're looking for as part of this proposal is simply to do the inventory work. NRPC is not going to prepare the plan. That plan will be put together through the master plan, through the subcommittee of the master, from the planning board, and then that will be brought to the planning board, the full planning board, for final action and determination whether or not that planning board will adopt the Route 3 corridor plan.
Ah, okay.
So they're just creating a map and inventory.
So that plan will be submitted to, after the group gets together, a plan will be made and submitted, and submitted to the planning board for approval.
This is a data gathering stage.
And implementation, but there are...
There are additional steps and it, depending on what the, what the, what the planning board and the steering committee end up recommending, there's very likely going to be brought before the council because of, obviously, we're talking about decisions that involve finances and expenditures and we certainly want to have your input as we go through this process.
But it wouldn't be required.
It would not be required, but I certainly would be recommending it to the board.
Dan?
I don't know who wrote the motion, um, because I know motions usually come from, from, from up here, but it, it looks like it's a harmless motion. I'm against the motion right off the bat, I'll just say that upfront. By implementing their request, is you are, like Tom is saying, he's completely 100% right. If you implement their request to go down this road, this road takes us down to the master plans, implementations of their designs for sidewalks. And countless years have gone by, it's always been a subject of sidewalks or no sidewalks, but Tom, once again, 100% correct, you inadvertently are subjected to that future plan. So by accepting this motion, the way it's written, it sounds like, "Oh, and no funding required from you today." That's not, that's not what the big picture is. I think it was Dunkin' Donuts in town was just, got, received back $45,000, I want to say the right number. They had to require to put money aside for sidewalks, and then we were required to give it back, $45,000. These are small businesses, and that's times 100 other businesses in town. If we, as a council, are not in favor of this because of the million dollars a year it would cost to maintain sidewalks, and that's being, when we know, was it 200,000, Tom? The snow machine was roughly $120,000. You'll need several of them, and then the cost to operate them, I think I'm in the realm of not sounding crazy by saying, to clear sidewalks in a 12-month period would be about a million dollars a year. And so I can't support it for that reason. Again, I said it before, if I was Nevada, if it was Arizona, but we are in a region that has five months of snow, and you clear a sidewalk, and if you don't put salt or sand, slip and fall, the liability is endless for a municipality to get involved in. I don't support sidewalks for those reasons, and that's why I can't support this motion. Thank you.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Is that okay? All right, so based on that, just to take it back a step, I understand, and I watched the Bob Best Talk Sidewalks in preparation for this, so I'm not hiding under the desk at the moment. That said, I think the goal of the committee, yes, the master plan says we shall go through and do a master plan for sidewalks. More importantly is to reach out to the citizens of Merrimack and find out what they're interested in. I'm seeing 50/50 on the people that are responding on the Merrimack forum, of about 50 people who made comments to it. Some people are adamantly against, some people are for. I'm in no way, shape, or form, and most of us on the Board, we don't want to pave all of Merrimack. We don't even want to pave a big portion of it. There's some condensed areas that it makes sense to pave, or not to pave, put sidewalks in. And then there's lots of areas where it doesn't make sense. We regulate sidewalks in our regulation for Merrimack. If that's something that isn't supported by the community, then we should look at the laws for that and what we're requiring people, because yes, it affects businesses, yes, we do a payment in lieu of, which is what happened with Dunkin' Donuts, that payment in lieu. They opted instead of doing sidewalks at that point in that, that they could put money in a bank. We have to access it to combine it in another location that, that, that's not really, well, can I talk, I don't know if I should talk to that part of it, but I, there's steps to use those in payment in lieu of funds, and it's not really in place. It's something our committee's working on, the steps of going through, figuring out how those could be applied, because right now, people opt not to do it, and they just put the money in there, and then it goes back.
And I find that legal extortion as a small businessman, that's what the community did to a business, and they got their money back, but there was a chance that they might not have. And we extort money for grand plans of sidewalks to force businesses to put money into a kitty, and this time it didn't work, we had to give it back to them. That's my view of how you can squeeze a business owner to death over it.
Tim, you look like you have something to say.
Regarding payment in lieu, I have stopped recommending payment in lieu after the Dunkin' Donuts project and the Atrium Medical project.
Good.
For that simple reason that we don't have a plan, and we're just going to be returning these funds back to these developers because we don't have a plan. One of the important things that I think needs to come...
But once you do have a plan... But once you do have a plan, you can do it.
If I can finish my thought, this is, this is an important component of, I think, what needs to be done sorely with our regulations. Right now, the way our regulations are written, every project, regardless of size or location, is required to provide a sidewalk. It makes no sense. If we get nothing else out of this master planning effort than ordinance regulation amendments that target the areas where sidewalks are appropriate and where they're not appropriate, that would be a successful outcome to me.
We could change that policy without passing this amendment.
We could, but if we want to find out where the sidewalks are appropriate to be located and where the community wants to see them, that's where I think the value is in this effort.
Jody, and then Finley.
Thank you, Nancy. Well, I understand the concerns about money. I understand the concerns about maintenance. And there are some state statutes that do allow protection to municipalities due to slipping balls on snow and ice. I've got some experience with that, so it's not all or nothing like it's been implied here. I understand that we can't put sidewalks in all of Merrimack. It's just, it's not even something I would even consider remotely supporting. However, Route 3 and some sections of Route 3, and I did sit on the Master Plan Steering Committee, and there was a lot of discussion about, very good discussion about sidewalks, but I think, again, you've got a very small population making comments about it, and I think there are a lot more people that do walk and would use sidewalks than we actually hear from. There are spots on Route 3 that we desperately need a sidewalk. You know, do we need to do the entire length of Route 3? Maybe not, probably not. But there are sections that are dangerous, that there is currently, and all winter long there is pedestrian traffic, that I think is dangerous. And I think you'd see more pedestrian traffic if we had sidewalks. So I believe there is a need in this section of road. Whether this amendment is the proper way to go or not, I'm not really sure, but I absolutely do think there's a need, and it would be appropriate for us somehow, some way, to look at installing sidewalks on that section of road. That's my opinion. Thanks.
Finley?
I agree with sidewalks in many areas of town. I think when we get to the extremes, when it goes out into the DOT section, it's possibly, I believe there would be use, I think the other end of Continental Boulevard, but I would rather see a painted line with a wire, you know, on the shoulder of the road to accommodate that, for all the reasons that have been spoken about. I think the focus on sidewalks, for me, would be the immediate location, which we have a number of them, waiting for the intersection upgrade on Wire Road in order to potentially accommodate that. The new bridge will have the sidewalk built into it by law. It's got to be there now. And so those areas make a lot more sense to me than it does the further distance. And in a perfect world, going all the way down Continental Boulevard, the Penetra Square might be the greatest thing in the world, but I don't think it's practical. Now, another, just, this is just a comment on something that was said earlier about we're having to maintain all these sidewalks. I thought we had a policy determining what sidewalks would be maintained and what wouldn't, but if I heard, what I heard tonight is accurate, everything is supposed to be maintained, and I didn't, I didn't think that to be true, so I don't...
Can I speak to that? So we had the same question about maintenance, and we went to legal counsel, and Carrie-Anne came back and said that as long as we have a policy and a plan that gives the priorities, which we already do, so we would just be adding to that plan. And basically, it was said that in past case laws, that if the town wasn't able to get to all the sidewalks before the next storm, the law understood that and didn't fault the town.
But I think that if we have to maintain them all, and I don't know that that's accurate, but if we do, it would be very cost prohibitive. It would cost a fortune, because I don't remember ever until this year going all the way down Route 3. I thought we did it just to push the banks back because it was so much snow this year, but, you know, so I can appreciate the sidewalk situation in the center of town, going down Babu's Lake Road, even maybe a little farther. I think the school district should look at their busing policy if we do that, but that's another conversation. I think going into the extremes of town, though, just isn't practical right now. And I can appreciate NRPC looking at this and making suggestions, but if it locks me into a situation where I don't, I'm not confident that it will come back to us because of the cost component, not because of, you know, to know if it's a good idea or not, but just because of the potential cost to the town, I'm uncomfortable with that. I'd like to know it's absolutely going to come back here, if, before a plan is moved forward, so...
Tim, can we do any...
You want to respond?
Yes.
Hi. Can we do a presentation back to you after the NRPC does that, and we get all of our information, because there's some community weigh-in sessions that are going to be a part of that? It's not just going to be, like, they're doing their Dash Cam stuff, but there's going to be more community feedback, and then we can present that before we make it anything final.
Is there any way, making a motion, that limits it? That if we go ahead and do the assessment, that no action, the committee can take no action on it until it's reviewed by, I don't know if that's even possible?
Right.
No.
That's not possible. Bill, you were going to have a question. I'm sorry, Eileen, were you going to say something?
It absolutely, the only issue really is that this, accepting this amount of, it's not actual money, but you're accepting a grant, and that's what you're doing right now. And what it's doing is it's facilitating a process that could end up with something that's totally under the Planning Board's jurisdiction.
Related to sidewalks?
Related to sidewalks. It's under their site and subdivision law. They could go forward and do it in a different way, but this is a freeway.
Bill, did you have?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, to be honest with you, Madam Chair. So in looking at, Donna, looking at your memorandum to us, you reference a letter going back to a November 22, 2013 Planning Board meeting, where the DOT invoked jurisdiction on prohibiting the construction of sidewalks?
In their, in their specific right-of-way.
Okay, so if I'm a private property owner and you're asking me to build a sidewalk on my property, on my private property, why would the DOT invoke jurisdiction?
They wouldn't in that case, right.
But, but you said, as it relates to property on DW, that you're looking to build, you're looking to seek approval for this grant based upon what the DOT had communicated to you previously back on 2013?
Right, so in their section of DW Highway, if the plan showed that it would need to, like an actual site plan showed that it would be in their right-of-way, they would have to grant approval. If, and some properties just can't have, they don't have the space, or they, you know, it's sloped, or somehow the land is swarmed where they can't have the sidewalk run through their property. So there are times where it would be in the DOT's right-of-way.
So the purpose of the plan, or the purpose of applying for the grant is to address those particular needs where topography and geography warrant...
Right.
Where, if it goes into the DOT right-of-way, in order for the DOT to grant approval?
Right, so for a specific site, if it had to be in the DOT right-of-way?
Okay.
They wouldn't approve it unless we had a plan.
Along Route 3, where does the urban compact begin?
It's from Bedford Row to Greeley Street is the urban compact, so that's Merrimack's jurisdiction. Anything north of Bedford is DOT, and anything south of Greeley is DOT.
Which was the issue that we had with Super Doggie Daycare.
Correct. This is what...
I just, I want to make sure I got that, okay. Changing tack just a little bit, what's the proposal for bikes in Merrimack?
That was going to be kind of after we solved the Route 3 project. We've prioritized Route 3 because of DOT's letter.
So really, the bicycle pedestrian corridor plan is really focusing on sidewalks?
The initial...
There's been no discussion at the Subcommittee level regarding creating appropriate ways for bicycles to traverse through the town of Merrimack?
That's the point of the study, when you get to that point. Like, if you look at Bedford's Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, they go through complete streets where they're talking about handling bicycle traffic, pedestrian traffic, and identifying routes where it made sense for bikes to go in, and sidewalks as well. And again, they're not connecting everything with sidewalks or even bicycles in their district, but the idea being, the master plan, you take a look at that and what citizens are interested in, and you put it down as a hotspot, and you study what it is, and that's the task of the committee. So at this point, the thing that was most driven is dealing with the DOT problem with that corridor, and then going from there to the full master plan, which is absolutely including bikes. And I ride my bike, like, I'm, it's, I'm a user of these things.
The thing that, and to kind of dovetail off our Council of Allen Court, I mean, to me, if there's a location along DW Highway, it's at, it's at Wire Road and at the MYA where the Babu's Lake Brook is. To me, that is just, and we've talked, we've talked about this. I see sidewalks viable within an urban compact. Anything outside the urban compact, that's the reason why they're outside the urban compact, you know? So I'm really, I'm kind of struggling to embrace the request for the grant, because to me, that the real need is, you know, within that urban compact. It's not, it's not, it's not outside. To me, the need is inside the urban compact.
Tom, can you?
But the grant would study all of DW Highway, not just the DOT jurisdictional area.
We have a mile Main Street.
One of the reasons...
But that's, yeah.
One of the reasons for looking to NRPC to do this evaluation study is to understand a master plan for the entire length of the corridor, but it would definitely include the urban contact, compact area. One of the drivers had been that initial DOT statement that a master plan would be required to do further stuff. And with a good master plan, you could make a decision as to whether or not single pieces or pieces that ultimately connect could be appropriate. There are properties, the Flatley property up north, where it may be very critical to have sidewalks, whether they're internal to the property or not. But in order to get a property like that to work, you need to be able to get pedestrians around as well. And so to just, just say that because it's an urban compact, we don't need sidewalks is maybe a little blinded.
I'm not, I'm saying we need, I'm saying we need sidewalks in urban compact.
And so, but you said that outside of urban compact, and the Flatley property is outside of, and I think there are definitely beneficial needs for that. And it needs to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis and understood. What the NRPC is offering to do is help look at that, collect data, understand...
I understand that, but I would have thought this would have been adjusted in the whole master plan process that this Subcommittee just went through for 18 months.
And the master plan process says put together a sidewalk and bicycle master plan, which is what they're attempting to do.
Okay, why don't we, is everyone ready to, I can entertain a motion? Or not?
I'll move that the Town Council vote to accept and authorize NRPC's proposal for the Route 3 Bicycle and Pedestrian Corridor Plan to assist the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan Work Group with implementing the 2014 Town Master Plan and addressing DOT's requirement of creating a comprehensive plan for Route 3 prior to any further sidewalk construction in the DOT jurisdiction.
Motion.
And that the Town Manager and her delegate be, the Town Council would authorize the Town Manager or her delegate to execute any and all documents which may be necessary to implement the NRPC's program.
Any second?
Second.
Second by Jody Allen Court. Any more discussion?
Question for Donna.
Sure.
Yeah?
Can you explain to me what a windshield survey is?
They literally put a camera up on a windshield and drive the corridor, so that way they have actually street scrape as well, instead of just doing it off the GIS. So it gives you more detail, and then they can go through the video and map it for us.
Google car.
Right.
Street view.
Right, street view.
Street view.
But more recent.
Okay.
Okay, all those, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
If I might, I mean, I know there's a lot of angst about this whole project and whether or not the Town Council would lose authority and control over requirements for sidewalks and stuff like that. And I think we have to keep in fact, in mind, the fact that while they are autonomous to some degree, they're appointed by the Town Council, and they, they are not, in my opinion, folks that are out there to try and do things contrary to what the Town Council is willing to support and approve. The offer from Tim to bring the approved, the final master plan project back to the Town Council for approval, I suspect if we merely ask the Planning Board, they'd be more than happy to bring it before the Town Council for approval. They're not trying to be renegades and things of that nature, so I would, I would appreciate your support for this, to get further study and further information with the confidence and understanding that the Planning Board will continue to work with the Town Council in the future to implement the right things for the town of Merrimack. Thank you.
Ready for a vote? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, okay, so that's three. All those opposed? Four. Okay, so the motion was defeated, 3-4-0. Thank you. And the negative was Finley Rothaus, Nancy Harrington, Tom Mahan, and Dan Dwyer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Desiree, thank you. Tim, thank you.
Okay, the next three things hopefully are going to be really quick, knock on wood. Amendment of Town Council Rule Procedure. And this has to do with, everyone was given a copy of the rules... Um, okay, the next three things hopefully are gonna be really quick, knock on wood. Amendment of Town Council Rule Procedure. And this has to do with, everyone was given a copy of the rules, and every year we have to make a decision about July, June, July, and then November, December. What I'd like to do is recommend one thing that would make a decision made for following years. If you look under Regular Meetings, which is the first page of the Rules of Procedure, if we add, during the month of July and August, the council shall meet once each month to be determined by council consensus, and in the month of November and December, we'll meet on the first and third Thursday. That would cover, so that we don't have to go through this every year.
So moved.
Ah.
Second.
Motion by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mahon, and I have dates. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, holding that, okay, July. Normally we would have a meeting on the ninth and twenty-third. If we're going to have one meeting, I would recommend July sixteenth. It can be changed.
You're gonna say the third, or something like that, or the second?
Well, I said, to be determined by council consensus, that can be modified.
Well, we can wait till June to decide what date that is.
Well, people have occasions that they might want to arrange.
Okay.
I mean, if you're absent too, I mean, you don't. Uh, in August, the meetings would normally be thirteenth and twenty-seventh. Uh, again, it's just sort of in the middle, the twentieth of August. We can always change it, the closer we get.
And you can always, and you can always add one, so if something, some type of form of business came up, Kinder Morgan, et cetera, we, nothing prevents us from having another, adding a meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And for the two thousand fifteen calendar, if we adjust from the second to fourth Thursday to the first and the third, the meetings in November would be November fifth and nineteenth. And in December, normally they'd be the tenth and twenty-fourth, I don't think we want to meet on Christmas Eve. So the new dates would be December third and seventeenth. But now that it's been, the rules of procedure have been modified, that can be an automatic. Thank you. Next.
Do you have that motion around?
Adult?
Adult.
It does, it curves up her paper, though, you want it in better form?
I'll, I'll send it to her in email. Okay, Town Council Retreat and Goal Session. Uh, this is where we meet. One time a year, we review, we talk about our vision for the coming years and goals. And last year, we held it on May sixteenth, and it was at Swan's. Obviously, that's a, so, we're not this year, so we need to determine a date and talk about a location. Again, it's usually done in May. Yeah, well, it could be moved to June if we want. Paul, I'm sorry.
To help your decision process, I got in contact with our facilitator that we use.
Okay.
He gave me three dates.
Okay.
May fifteenth, June fifth, June nineteenth. Those are what are opened on his calendar right now for the months of May and June.
June fifth.
I like that. June fifth is on a Friday. Are they all Fridays?
Yeah, they're all Fridays.
All Fridays, okay. What's the pleasure of the group, June fifth has been proposed. Okay with me, too. Any idea on locations? We could have it at the tavern. Well, they have that little room as you enter. Residents' Inn, Residents' Inn, yes. Yeah, Ebenezer's.
Ebenezer's?
Ebenezer's.
Now we're talking. Days Inn had a function that we held my first year here with.
But you know, that room at Barclays would be nice. I mean, that really would be nice.
How about if you allow us to give you some options and bring them to the next meeting?
Okay, so June fifth it is, and we'll get, and that gives us a little more time, it's not May, and we'll talk about it. Excellent. Okay. Well, we'll, okay. Now, the very last one is Committee Assignments. Everyone has, was sent a copy of the present committee assignments. I did not make, bring a copy myself.
An email?
Email, that's correct. And so, what I'd like to do is, oh, thank you, Tom. What I'd like to do is go down and start filling in the blanks. What we've done previously is counselors who have been a rep for a particular committee always has the first choice on whether they want to continue as that rep. If they're open to it, they will make it open, and someone can volunteer. So, okay, so Chair will be, I'll fill that in later. Town Chair, Tom. Adult Community Center Rep. I have been, but I'd be very willing to, anyone else who would be interested. But I would also continue if, if no one wants to. Conservation Commission, Tom. What's your pleasure?
Conservation's been Tom Mahon.
Correct, I'm sorry, I meant to say Mahon.
Are you still gonna do Planning Board?
Um, no, I'd be, I'd be interested in stepping down from that if you want to swap or something.
Okay, so Planning Board Voting Member, used to be Tom Kending, and you're opening it up. You're offering?
Yeah.
You, what, you have, okay.
What is, what does he want?
He would like to be the voting member, Tom Mahon.
Okay.
And Bill, you were the backup.
I'm more than happy to.
You still want to, okay.
Should, should Mr. Mahon be incapacitated to serve as the Planning Board Representative, I'd be more than willing to fulfill his shoes for that moment in time.
Excellent. Um, okay, so Conservation. Tom, you had done that in the past.
Right.
Any volunteers to do that? Look at how you're just jumping all the.
I don't want to take it from somebody if they want it, but I'd be happy to do it.
Okay, 'cause Tom is not gonna do it, so he's gonna do the planning. So you'd like to do Conservation? Okay, Jody. Okay, Ed CAC. Was Bill?
I'd still would like to serve.
Excellent. Highway Safety Committee.
I'd like to continue that, unless somebody's dying to have it, but I'd really enjoy it.
Oh, I skipped one, okay, um. Yeah.
Three last year.
Okay, Heritage Commission is where the.
It has nothing to do with it, it has with the people who are there, quite honestly.
It just happens to be one of them. Okay, Heritage Commission.
I think that should go to the oldest council member.
Well, that would be me.
Oldest in terms of age?
Yes. Heritage, you know, tradition, history. It's just a thought. It's getting late, Tony.
You'll do the Heritage?
Yes.
Roth House. Okay. National Regional Planning Commission.
I had been doing that because I was part of the Planning Board and thought it was appropriate to keep that together, but, you know, so I'm not, I'll do it if, if that's what makes sense, but.
Should be between the two of you.
I don't know if you want to pick that up.
Quarterly, isn't it?
It's supposed to be.
His face.
Yeah, it's like quarterly. All right.
Tom Mahon.
You're retired too, aren't you? Wait a minute.
At least they're in town, except for the few times when they decide to meet out of town.
Parks and Rec, Dan Dwyer, you want to continue?
I'd like to continue that, yep. I frankly think it's the best committee on, in the list.
Technology Committee, we did have Brian McCarthy, but he is, you want to do that?
I was gonna volunteer for that.
Ah. Anybody want to fight over that?
I surely don't belong on that committee.
And Town Center Committee. Was Finley.
And, and I'll keep doing it, I have failed to be at the past couple of meetings, but I, it, it was just, we meet daytime, and I've just created myself a little conflict, because it's normally not a problem, but.
Okay, I will submit this. Becky can. I'm sorry, second. Oh, please feel free to go right ahead, there was a question I didn't know the answer to.
I just, I had asked because, because some of you were still here a couple of years ago when I was Chair of Merrimack Safeguard. I've sent, I have since stepped down from the committee, I'm no longer a member, but I came forward along with the Police Department requesting Town Council representation, because it really is an entire town committee. It's not a school district committee, it's an entire town committee, and they changed their meeting nights, because they used to meet the same nights as the Town Council, so they changed their meeting nights to the alternate Thursdays. And at the time, we had asked for representation, and Finley graciously accepted, but I think it was like a couple of years ago now, and I know Finley was going to the meeting, since I've stepped down, I don't know what's happened, but, um, and I've been on the committee off and on for years, so I really think it'd be better if somebody else, somebody new, because there's a lot.
Not at all, we want your experience, Jody.
There's a lot of good information, though, but it's, it's good for new people to come in, and I'm all for new people coming in. But anyway, so I just, it wasn't on our list, so I asked Nancy about it, and Nancy said that we would talk about it tonight. I, I, I know there's a lot of committee assignments, but I think somebody from the town, especially, I mean, we were lucky, we got the five-year grant for the School Resource Officer again, but we, that first five years flew, and five years is gonna fly by again, and I think it really would benefit that committee from Town Council input, Mike. Thanks, thank you, Nancy.
Okay, so it's not, under status, it's not required, but.
Correct.
Finley, do you remember what the history is?
Well, the reason, they have many representative group, people representing different groups in town, I can't, stakeholders, not stakeholders, that term drives me nuts, they, there's something they call them, I'm drawing a blank, but nonetheless, Jody did come, came forward, thinking that it would be good for us to be there, agreed and participated, and will continue to do so, I thought you might want to do it. But, they meet basically monthly, and it's ba, it's, it's basically trying to work to, um, bring to a positive light the things that would be beneficial to the community, to the students, you know, children of the community and so on, to make good decisions and everything related to it.
And to work towards maintaining the grant. There are requirements, you have to go up every single year to request a renewal, so there, there is work involved maintaining the grant.
And it's ours, it's participation, we have to have so many.
In-kind contribution.
Contribution hours and so on, and so they do that, and, you know, that, all these players involved work towards that goal, and, so if somebody wants to do it, that's fine, but I will continue otherwise, for sure. Looks like that's what it is.
So I'm gonna pass this.
Actually.
And as soon as it's.
So you got me here to remember, remind you to turn the light on.
Thanks, yep.
You're all set, no kidding.
So.
You played that one.
Thanks, Steve.
So we will have that typed up, we'll have it in the signed file.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Approval of Minutes.
Do we want to table that to the next meeting?
That's fine with me.
Motion to table to May fourteenth, the minutes of March twenty-sixth and April ninth.
Seconded.
Motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Dan Dwyer. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Seven, zero, zero. Comments from the press? Look at the rush. Comments from the public?
My name is John Sauter, I'm at Nine Elizabeth Drive. I'm a member of the Technology Committee, and so welcome, Tom, to the Technology Committee. With the departure of Brian, who was the former rep from the council, we no longer have a chairman. So unless Tom would like to be the chairman, I ask the council to appoint me Chairman of the Technology Committee, so we can have a meeting.
Now, do we do the, or does the committee, the committee chooses, don't they?
I would think so.
The committee chooses.
What's the issue?
The issue is, we can't call a meeting to order without a chairman.
Chairman calls a meeting.
Sure you can.
I think you can get together and vote on a chairman, and then they take off with it.
Okay.
Is that my understanding?
So why don't we move to appoint you temporary chairman until such time as the committee gets together to, a pro tem chairman or something, until the.
Till such time as the committee can elect a new chair.
Seconded.
So, motion made by Tom Kending, seconded by Bill Boyd, to assign you as temporary chair. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 The answer, yes and no, what? I read body language really well.
It's a real slippery slope. It wasn't agended. You can't take action on items that's not agenda. It's not a big thing, because you're just calling a meeting to have it. Technically, we have a representative from town who's an employee, who the Town Manager can tell him to call the meeting, to set a new person as chair.
So there's an employee on the committee.
Chuck, Chuck, Chuck Miller's on the committee, who works for Eileen, you can ask Eileen to have him call the meeting. It's a slippery slope, it wasn't, it wasn't agenda.
Chuck is not a member of the committee, he is the representative of the, of the town to the committee. He's not a voting member.
I understand that, but he can. He can.
Call a meeting.
Call a meeting.
Check your bylaws.
We, we don't have bylaws, that's one of the stakes we made.
They don't have bylaws. And I know this.
I, I think Paul is correct, I think this is something that we probably shouldn't, I think, again, there's no bylaws, so you're not breaking anything. So if you call a meeting and everybody comes together, okay, let's vote on a chairman. I think that could.
So can Eileen just talk to Chuck and ask him to orchestrate a meeting so they can get together and elect officers? Can we do that?
Eileen could orchestrate the meeting.
Yes.
So be written, so be done.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging around.
Adam, sorry you were here. God bless you, John.
Come on up. Again, please just restate your name and.
Diplon, fifteen Christopher Road, Merrimack, thanks for listening to me again.
Thanks for hanging around. God bless you.
It's been fascinating, and I've been here for a while, it's been fascinating. I've been in town for over twenty-five years, and I haven't been here often enough, obviously. And it seems like everyone wants to have a committee, I'm thinking us and our community, our neighborhood, perhaps we will have a committee, and we'll come here and ask you to appoint one of us to some head, I don't know. I guess what I really want to say is, I'm hoping truly that the ball field is off of the Planning Board for our small neighborhood, as we already endure two of them there, and with the wetlands and the, the area that, what it's gone through now, it would be quite an eyesore and detriment to our, our small neighborhood. And that being said, if it was still on the agenda, and Mr. Dwyer had mentioned that the neighbors should get together and buy the property, it never even occurred to me that that was an option.
It didn't occur to me until tonight.
Yeah. So I would just like it to be said that if that is the case, and the town is considering selling that property for some use that is not part of our neighborhood, that more than the abutters would like to know that, so that perhaps we could get together and, and take care of our own business in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Just to give you a little information, a couple, three years ago, was it, we got, we did an evaluation of the land that the town owned, and a lot of it was sold off, or there were landlocked pieces, and neighbors would buy the landlocked pieces to increase their backyards. And one of the reasons why that was not sold off or put up for auction is because of the baseball fields. That that was being saved, not baseball, for fields.
It was just identified as a potential.
Potential.
Place for athle, for a field.
So just let you on the pass, you know, town land has been sold.
Okay, so do you anticipate that piece of property being available for sale, or do you still anticipate it being used for a ball field?
That's not to be determined yet, to be honest with you, it would have to be thought about, and, go ahead, Finley.
I, I, do a bit of wait till our comments.
Yes, why don't we, thank you.
Just three quick questions. I promise, I know I'm as tired as you guys are. Okay, Paul, so three times earlier, you said that Mike got fifteen hundred dollars for a contract, and no matter if he cut one tree down, if he cut twenty-five trees down, he got fifteen hundred dollars. Do you know the percentage of money he got from the board, the board fee that was cut?
Zero.
He got zero? That's not what he told me?
He got zero.
Okay, well, I'm gonna look, that's not, that's, that's not what he told me, he told me he got a percentage. Okay. The, the logging company has to bring the logs to the lumber scales, and they have to fill out a form, and it has to be mailed to the town. When will that be available, to be viewed?
They are sitting with Mr. Powers right now, and we're just waiting for. They are sitting with Mr. Powers right now, and we're just waiting for the scale receipts to come back. Then we match them up, and he gives me a report.
Okay.
Any, any time, usual timeline, couple of weeks a week?
Couple, three weeks.
All right, and then, Paul, you and Mike both told me that the town stood to get about seven thousand dollars from the, the cut trees. In a letter to Deb Vaughn, Eileen, you said the town was going to get three thousand dollars. When are we going to have that final number? Is that dependent on the?
That's dependent on a total number of board feet that was sent up to the mill, and what they got for a price per board foot.
Okay, so that's, that's, we're waiting on that, that form. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Council Comments. Yes, Bill?
Yeah, very quickly, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Jody, welcome aboard, very happy to have you here. As a part of the Merrimack Town Council, I look forward to working and serving with you. Number two, as it's, as it's been noted, I think, by several of us here later tonight, the police and the fire department have been busy the last couple of weeks. The police had a very interesting and dangerous situation involving a domestic dispute, a kid, a woman was detained against her will and crawled out of her window, and eventually the police were able to arrest the individual, and he was carrying a dangerous weapon, so I just want to thank the, the Police Department for, for their continued diligence for maintaining public safety in our community, and also to the Fire Department for doing the job that they've done over the last, last couple of days. We had a, we had a brush fire, we had, we had more fires today, a dryer fire, so they've been busy, so I just want to publicly thank them for, both of them, for the work that they continue to do. And then on a lighter note, I wanted to commend ten people that, that from Merrimack or represented Merrimack at the Boston Marathon. Ryan Commerford, Brian Kane, Alexander Luke, Kate Loignan, Stu Varga, Leanne Ward, Michelle Wheeler, and Adrian Wong made the sojourn from Hopkinton to Boston this past Monday, so I just want to commend them for their efforts because it's, that's a special day. To me, it's, tells me spring's here, Red Sox are playing, and, you know, everybody's out watching the runners of the Boston Marathon. But a special shout out to Officer Mike and his wife Catherine Maricot from the Merrimack Police Department, who also ran the race as well, so I want to give them kudos as well, and thank you very much, everybody.
Anyone else? No. Yes.
I just, you know, the, the talk of the property down on John and Wildcat Falls and Atherton Street, some of the questions about the field use and so on, and possibly selling the property, I didn't even really have to speak to it tonight, but it's something that at some point we might discuss. I don't, there was a severe shortage of field space is what was brought to our attention a number of years ago, three or four years ago, and I don't know if that's changed, but in, no decision is coming up in the near future that I'm aware of on that anyhow, but, but that's, you know, at some point in time, that might become a discussion, I don't.
One of our lighter agendas.
Yeah. So anyhow, that was, I, I didn't have to wait, I suppose, but.
No? No, she has to.
I just want to clarify that, that was an off-the-cuff remark, I still support it, I think if, if the residents in that area, but more to your point, let me, it's late, so I apologize. Even if the, the field study has suggested the site, it doesn't mean that it's etched in stone, things change. If the neighborhood vehemently does not want a ball field, I got a feeling you don't, then I can't see the council, no matter how badly we might want a field, that we're going to, we're going to put it there. So how about setting it up so that land isn't a, a threat to you guys anymore, then maybe perhaps you could make a request, and we could sell it. If we're not going to keep it for a ball field, then it makes perfectly sense, since we did have a precedent for doing that kind of thing in the past, that this situation might call for being done again. So, just want to make sure that there was no plan on me having that idea before I sat down here tonight, it occurred to me as we were debating the issue, so, thank you.
Okay. I would like, yes, Tom?
And just to coattail on that, I will not support a ball field in that area. I don't think that's appropriate for that neighborhood, especially given the ball fields that are near there as well already.
What's that? Can I have a motion adjourned?
Still moved.[1744.23]